Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, April 1st, 2014, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. A roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next item on the agenda is approval of the form of meeting agenda, and Manager Neil has an item he wishes to add, I think, to the consent agenda, is 4K.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would propose to add this item to the consent agenda tonight. I just put it in front of council, but it has had a review by our legal counsel and by representatives from Fairview-Southdale Hospital. This is an agreement to allow Fairview and their contractors to move some heavy equipment over a public street that still has weight limits on it right now. In this agreement, they're agreeing to put up an escrow with the city to cover any potential damages they need to do. They're involved in a project I think we're all familiar with, and they've reached a critical juncture where this grant of approval tonight from the council would be quite important to their construction timing.
All right. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion from a council member to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of 4K, which is the proposed agreement with Fairview-Southdale Hospital with regard to weight restriction.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion as second. Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then, adoption of the consent agenda is the next portion of the agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Bennett?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. I would like to remove K for brief discussion. I have at least one question about it.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
A, please.
A. All right. We've got removal of 4A and K from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion as second to approve items B through J on the consent agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Back to 4A. Member Sprague?
Thank you, Your Honor. On page seven of the notes from the March 18th meeting, I wanted to clarify the motion made by yourself, Mayor Hovland. It was on the page. It's just before item 8C, two paragraphs up. It says, "Mayor Hovland made a motion, seconded by Member Swenson, to immediately begin work on extending the driving range and executive course projects consistent with the master plan." And as I understand it, and as I read through back the tape, it was not the master plan that we're going to do prospectively. It was the current concept plan in place for the driving range and for the executive course renovation. So my suggestion is to put "consistent with the existing concept plan."
The maker of the motion and the secondor of the motion agree with that? Can you be a secondor of a motion? The person who seconded the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd like to move this item with the change of strike "master plan" and replace with "existing concept plan."
Thank you.
And I'll second that motion.
Did we not, because I didn't go back and listen to it, but I read the motion, did we not talk about aligning that concept plan with the master plan? Didn't we have that discussion?
No. What we said, so the item before that was to start the master plan for the golf course, but independent of what had already been planned for the driving range and executive course projects. And during the discussion item, the mayor says, Scott Neal and the mayor had a discussion about what he meant, and the mayor said, "I understand that." And then he made the motion, and Ann says, "The current, the master plan now that exists for the driving range and the executive course." There's a concept plan. It's actually in, yeah.
Right. Right. I understand.
So that's what the mayor was referring to, and that's why I wanted to clarify.
And the discussion was not to delay the work on the driving range to wait for, okay.
Clear. I just want, yeah. I just want to make sure that they do align.
We'll have to align the master plan with the work that we're going to be doing.
Correct.
But you're correct in your statements as well. So the notion was to get moving on the plan that we had discussed, which was on the agenda this evening, actually, for contract approval. With respect to the driving range and the new Part III. So we got a motion as second with that change to the regular meeting minutes, March 18. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then down to 4K, which is the agreement that we received this evening, the proposed agreement between the city and Fairview-Southdale Hospital to allow the use of overweight vehicles on one of the streets. Andrew Evans, go ahead. Member Bennett?
Um, Manager Neil, just a question about the escrow provision. How was that amount for escrow determined?
I'm looking. Is Brian Olson still in the office, or maybe Mr. Knutson? Do you know?
He's out in the hall.
Mr. Knutson can answer the question. He was, or Chad?
Yeah, we calculated what we thought for a full repair of the street, and then took a percentage of that, what the exact percentage that Roger and Brian agreed on. Asked them on that. But we gave them a cost for full replacement.
Yeah, I appreciate very much the provision, the specificity of what roadways can be used, the specificity of the weight, the pre-use inspection, the amount of escrow. My only question is, what happens if the amount of escrow is not sufficient for the amount of damage that may occur?
City Attorney Knutson could probably answer this, but the language in there is pretty specific that they are responsible for any damage that we deem necessary in terms of... The escrow is just an estimate of an over, a mill and overlay. We don't think that, I honestly don't think there's going to be enough damage to warrant a reconstruction, but the language does specify that they are responsible if there is the event that there is damage in excess of just what a mill and overlay can accomplish that would be their responsibility. I have talked to the construction foreman, and it's not something that happens instantly. So as the trucks come in, if he starts to see that the roadway is being damaged, they can start to scale back some of their weights per axle and try to minimize the damage so that a mill and overlay can be sufficient.
Okay. Thank you.
In general, how long do load limits last?
Generally tell about the first of May, so for the next month or so.
Perfect.
Okay.
I'll move this.
I'll second.
Got a motion as second on 4K. Further discussion? All those in favor, approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then, next portion of the agenda, special recognitions and presentations we have won this evening, which is the Earth Day proclamation. And I'll read the proclamation as follows. "Earth Day 2014. Whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles; and whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth; and whereas it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create a green economy to combat the aforementioned global challenges; and whereas a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns; and whereas it is necessary to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Edina hereby proclaims April 22, 2014, as Earth Day, in order to support green economy initiatives in the city of Edina and to encourage others to undertake similar actions. Furthermore, let it be known that the city of Edina, Minnesota hereby encourages its residents, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to honor and celebrate the earth and commit to building a sustainable and green economy." Is there a motion with regard to that proclamation which has been advanced by the Energy and Environment Commission of the city?
So moved.
Got a motion as second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And Paul Thompson from our Energy and Environment Commission is here to talk a little bit about Earth Day and receive the proclamation. Paul, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. And on behalf of the Education and Outreach Committee of the Energy and Environment Commission, thank you for once again recognizing the importance of our environment. We urge citizens to do everything they can, but particularly this year, we're asking people, what will turn you on in 2030, powering our energy future? So the week after Earth Day, we will be having, and I want to thank Jennifer and the Communication Department for a lovely poster. You'll be seeing these posters all over Edina. It's going to be held on Monday, April 28, at Southview Middle School. And it's going to be different from other events that we've had because we have fifth graders, eighth graders, and eleventh graders that will be leading the evening. We do have a speaker who's an adult, Michael Noble, from Fresh Energy, but the whole evening will be focused on listening to and from the leaders of tomorrow or perhaps today. So we'll all be creating a vision of what will our world and what will Edina look like in 2030. So at this time, I'd like to ask my partner, Mindy, to pass out flyers so that everyone can book their calendar, and we invite the council members and city staff to all attend. And if you would, ride your bike. We're having valet parking outside. You don't even have to lock your bike, and we'll have prizes with bike helmets and different bike paraphernalia if you ride your bike.
And you've given the location, you've given the day, you've said it's in the evening, but could you state publicly the time, please?
Thank you so much. The time is from six, six to seven is an Action Resource Fair with 12 Edina organizations will be presenting. And then from 7:00 to 8:30 is the program in the auditorium, and we intend to fill the 640 seats. So please be one of them.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks, Mindy. All right. And then here's the proclamation, Paul. We've got one public hearing this evening, and that involves the proposal to issue a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license to the Edina Chamber of Commerce for their Taste of Edina event on May 15, 2014. And Chief Nelson has this matter. Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. The Edina Chamber of Commerce has applied for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license to hold their annual Taste of Edina event. The event will be held at the Weston on May 15 between 4:30 and 8:30 PM. The applicants have applied, or have complied with the stipulations for the temporary license, including hiring an off-duty officer for security. With the Taste of Edina venue being changed from an outside environment at Centennial Lakes Park to a more controlled interior ballroom setting with limited accents, I believe the event poses little public safety concern. I recommend approval of the temporary license, and I can stand for questions.
Questions for the chief. Member Bennett?
Thank you. The action requested a special permit to use city property. Where is the city property?
That was revised.
Yeah. You anticipated they were going back to the central.
Okay.
There's a revised one without that language in it.
Thank you.
Anyone else for the chief? All right. Standby, chief. We're going to open this matter up now for public testimony. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter? Ms. Severson, you want to come forward and talk a little bit about the chamber event this year? You're proposing to move locations?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council, thank you very much. Good evening. Great new venue this year.
Would you identify yourself too, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. Lori Severson, President of the Edina Chamber of Commerce. As the chief mentioned, we are going to be at the Weston Galleria this year. Don't have to worry about weather-related activities, but as far as anything safety-related issues or alcohol-related issues, we are going to be working with the Edina Liquor again, and Steve Groussen. They will be providing security as far as checking IDs, and as the chief mentioned, we will have an off-duty police officer with us as well that evening. But 4:30 to, actually, 7:30 is the timeframe, and one of our new events this year is chef's competition. Any questions? We're very excited. Hope that you'll all attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to testify regarding this matter?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
First, would you give us your business address, please?
Yes. 3300 Edinburgh Way, Suite 150.
Thank you.
Edina.
All right.
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Got a motion as second to close the public hearing. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion regarding the temporary intoxicating liquor license issuance?
I'll move the revised 6A.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion as second on revised 6A. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Thank you. Ms. Severson, thank you, chief.
It is a great event, and I assume, are we also going to sell tickets at the Edina liquor stores as we have done before?
Yes.
And will there be other, is that the only place they can go for tickets? Do you want, come back up here. This is your 60 seconds of public service. Where can one buy tickets for this great event?
Thank you so much. Great new website this year, tastedeina.com. Any of the Edina liquor locations, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, but it's very easy to do it online. And if you purchase within the next two weeks, you get a $5 discount, $30.
And I do know that the liquor stores do run out, and you do have a limit to the number of people, so if you want to make sure that you go, you need to buy your ticket early.
Exactly. Very early. Chef's competition is going to be very exciting. We have Jason Derusa emceeing the event, celebrity judges, and 30 restaurants, Edina restaurants. I think we're up to 75 different wines and 37 different beers. So it'll be a great experience.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And just contact Member Swenson if you need any more help.
Sorry about that, but...
I'm going to have to make her a chamber ambassador, huh? Join our committee.
All right. Next portion of the agenda is community comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and raise a matter not on the agenda this evening or that we haven't heard of in the last 30 days? Mr. Potts from our Planning Commission, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Ken Potts. I've been a resident at 4236 Crocker Avenue for 21 years. I would like to request five minutes to speak. If you need to stop me after three, I'll ask my wife to complete our comments, and then we'll take questions after that.
Mr. Potts, I'm afraid I have to limit you to three minutes, because that's a uniform rule here. We try to give everybody equal opportunity, but if I would have known about it in advance, the council could have considered this, but I'm afraid I'm going to have to limit you to three minutes.
Understood. I appreciate you being proactive about enforcing that.
Your wife also has three minutes.
Yes. I'm appearing tonight to discuss Edina's approach to enforcing city code. In my opinion, it is sporadic, inconsistent, and mostly passive. City Manager Scott Neal has defined passive enforcement in his blog, writing that, quote, "Passive enforcement means that we don't send city employees out to look for violations, but we will enforce city code violations on a complaint basis." Key terms that I will have to repeat here are passive and complaint. Manager Neal went on to say, quote, "It really depends on the character of the community and the will of the elected officials to know what their residents will tolerate when it comes to quality of life issues." Now, a few facts. By state statute, the city building official is responsible for enforcing the state building code. The city manager is responsible for enforcing the city code. We have filed a formal complaint detailing many items that my allotted time tonight will only allow me to touch on. I will leave a copy of that complaint with the city clerk and request that it be included in the meeting minutes that are part of the public record. So following are some examples of the detrimental effects of passive enforcement as defined by City Manager Neal and as practiced in residential neighborhoods. These are documented by publicly available information. State building code provisions are not being followed when staff ignores the explicit requirement to create stamped and signed review documents. Important aspects of the city's comprehensive plan are not being upheld when staff makes a practice of ignoring entire sections of code. Section 830 of the city code regarding land disturbing activities has been ignored for years across the city. Site plans have been reviewed in a passive manner, relying for accuracy without verification on the individual who produced them. Such plans have been incorrect, incomplete, and yet approved by staff. This allows a builder to tell anyone who asks, "I'm working from plans the city has approved." Any challenge to this must come from a resident who complains. Typically, this happens after construction is so far along that practical solutions are extremely limited. Next, lot coverage rules cannot be regulated when the math of the submitter is not checked and staff passively accepts the information presented. An example occurred at 4408 Morningside Avenue. Adjacent basements suffer from water damage when poorly designed and executed plans are passively accepted and approved. This happened at 4310 Branson Street. City infrastructure and adjacent property is damaged when staff does not enforce silt fence and erosion protection that is required as part of the building permit process. This happened at 4511 Golf Terrace. In conclusion, under current practices, residents simply seeking to protect their private property are labeled complainers. Unscrupulous builders who regularly interact with city staff know this and can use passive enforcement to their benefit, not getting permission first but begging forgiveness later, only after someone complains.
Mr. Potts, I'm afraid I need to ask you to stop and let you drift over just a little bit, so have your wife come up there and finish your thoughts and what you think we need to do from a remedial standpoint here.
Right here?
Thanks, Mr. Potts.
Hi. I'm Heather Beal. I want to underscore that we're coming here as residents tonight, although introduced differently. We've lived in Edina at 4236 Crocker Avenue for 21 years, and this is the first time I've come in in person, although I've watched many a time to actually present. Okay, so I'm going to just pick up where Ken left off. From what I've observed and experienced, the city has, in our opinion, from what we've observed and experienced, the city has appeased builders to the detriment of existing residents. I, this is Ken, initially had faith in the process, but to date have been let down by its execution. My family and I have experienced the direct impact of failure to enforce the examples cited before, and more. At the June 26, 2013 Planning Commission meeting, the city engineer addressed a question about city policy, saying that if city review criteria are not met, quote, "A certificate of occupancy wouldn't be issued. The homeowner wouldn't be able to move in." I am not aware, Ken again, of any instances where this policy has been reinforced, has been, sorry, enforced. In our opinion, a residential redevelopment coordinator whose focus is on construction issues, not on long-term impacts, has not sufficiently solved this problem. We also believe that staff is overworked and unable to effectively regulate an especially high volume of site plan reviews, building plan reviews, and construction activity. In our opinion, management by passive enforcement practices fails to protect the quality of life issues in the city of Edina. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll take this under advisement and visit with staff about it. Appreciate both of you coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, certainly, leave that with the clerk. Thanks, Mr. Potts. We'll make all of this part of the record. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward in the community comment portion of the agenda? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. The first matter before us tonight is a sketch plan review of 5100 Edina Industrial Boulevard. This is a popular street this evening, two buildings adjacent to each other, two different developers. And Director Teague has both these matters.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor mentioned, there are two sketch plans before you. Both properties are located right next to each other, just west of Highway 100 on Edina Industrial Boulevard, as you see, 5100 and 5108. Little closer look at the existing buildings on the site. The applicants in both cases are proposing to remove these structures. Because they're coming in together, staff had encouraged them to work together, work together with a unified type plan. The applicants have had some discussions with each other, but haven't been able to work out an agreement to develop these sites concurrently. As you see, there are four access locations off Edina Industrial Boulevard. We'd like to eliminate some of those. Ideally, one, potentially to line up with the existing driveway to the south, and then utilize the Metro Boulevard. In doing that kind of arrangement, a cross-access agreement would have to be worked out between the two properties. And again, they've met and talked to each other, but haven't been able to work that out. So we're reviewing these essentially separately this evening. So the first one, 5100, that is the building on stilts as you come off the Highway 100 exit ramp. Couple of renderings of what that building looks like. And what the applicant is proposing to do is build a 16,000-square-foot retail building. I should stop and mention that these are two uses proposed here for both of these sites that are not allowed in our current zoning and comprehensive plan, so the council has complete discretion in agreeing to moving forward, or you have complete discretion to make a decision here. So what they're proposing to do here is eliminate one of those accesses, so they would have the one access off Edina Industrial Boulevard. They have worked out an agreement with the temple to the north to provide an easement onto their site, utilize some shared parking, and then allow an access out of the site. So to try to address that issue that staff had in regard to traffic exiting onto Edina Industrial Boulevard. So you could go through the site, through the temple site, and connect with Metro Boulevard. Couple of renderings of what the building would look like, and I'll let the applicant speak to that in more detail. So as I mentioned, the site is zoned for planned office district, so retail is not an allowed use. It's guided in our comprehensive plan for industrial. Also, the properties to the south, the Burger King and the Shell gas station are also guided industrial. So in moving forward, if there's any comprehensive plan amendments proposed here, we'd like to clean that up and consider a comprehensive guide plan change for the entire corner. You may recall, the property to the west was in previously for a sketch plan to remodel that existing building. And at that time, we talked about requiring a small area plan, as this is located in an area that's suggested in our comprehensive plan as a potential for a small area plan. Don't believe at that time one was suggested. So looking at the zoning, PCD 2, which is our more, a little bit more limited commercial zoning district, there would be a number of variances that would be required if the property were rezoned. In building, bringing the building out toward the street, front setbacks, setback variances would be required. Also, they're proposing, based on the square footage of the building, 97 parking stalls would be required, and they're showing 75 on their site plan. Should they move forward, a parking and traffic study would be done. And again, they have secured potentially that easement to the north for some shared parking. And also, they would seek a parking stall setback variance of five feet on the west side. So with that, I can stand, stop and stand for questions, and the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Your thoughts on the proposed zoning change to either PCD 2, Planned Commercial District 2, or PUD, Planned Unit Development? As a professional staff person, do you have a preference if we should be contemplating either of those?
I think if the sites develop together, we would consider a PUD, creating a zoning district for the two sites. As standalone, there's only those couple of variances required, so PCD 2 would work as a separated standalone-type project.
All right. Thank you. Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right. Who's here representing the applicant? Please come forward and introduce yourself, please. Give us your business address, business name, as well.
Yes, I'm just handing out the business of the president.
We're going to hand you a handheld microphone there.
Good evening. Dean DeVolus, DJ Architecture, 333 Washington Avenue North, Minneapolis, Minnesota, and also resident of Edina. And so I'm going to give a little more background, and what I have here, and the reason why I'm showing this is really for two reasons. One is, when this was brought before, you guys really held tight to the design, and to give you credit, this is one of ours. And so I just want to sort of thank council, and you're the one that mentioned that, and it has, I just recently won an award from the Minnesota Shopping Center Association for quality of design, so I just wanted to share that with the council. And then number two, the reason why I have this up here... And then number two, the reason why I have this up here is really that some of the elements you see in this building is what's going to be brought forward to 5100. The ideas of some of the materials, addressing the street, trying to create a gateway in another portion of Edina and have it, have some of those elements. Which way, Jennifer, do I go? Click left to go forward?
That's right.
Okay, I didn't do that right. Or this, oh, this is one. All these, okay. Thank you. So that's just another view of the building, again, the idea addressing the corner. So to our property right here, and I don't know if this cursor works, the idea is this is a building that's on stilts, it has served its time, and it's time to have it redeveloped. And so in working this, really looked at the idea of placing a building on the corner to really help create a gateway, start establishing, even though it's a busy, start establishing pedestrian connections, tuck the drive-through behind, and work a shared parking arrangement with the temple, who I just met with yesterday, as a matter of fact, in which, if you look at this photo, their lot is empty Monday through Friday, and ours would be busy Monday through Friday. So the idea is that we'll have shared parking, shared asphalt, so we're reducing the number of spaces. So the thought is that during the work week, we'll use some of their parking, and then during the weekend, they will use our parking when they have services. So the idea is that we can share the asphalt, and also provides a secondary connection to the site also. So provide secondary connection, provide shared parking, and the temple's very happy because, you know, I talked about some of our tenants, like coffee shop and stuff like that, and they're like excited to have those uses, and they were actually even interested in renting some of the space to open up a small store of East Indian goods. So it's been a nice relationship discussion on that. So this is a closer view of the building, and the idea of we're lining with the parking lot, the drive-through component would be tucked behind. Back here, we're going to keep the trees along the west and east side of the property. If you saw Kerry's, Teague's picture, those two rows of mature trees, we're going to maintain those, trim them up, to allow visibility to the building, to keep this row of trees and keep the south row of trees, and then work the building at the edge of the site on the corner. This is a view looking at it from the west face of the building, so looking towards Highway 100. The idea is sort of creating a slope roof to give it some height and sinker to it and glass, and the thought is to address the street. This tenant on the end already has expressed interest in an outdoor cafe dining area that would be located this end, so that idea of putting the building up has already attracted type of tenants that would reflect that. And then the idea is the building have the stone, the roof, and some of the elements of the other building you saw at 70th and France. And then this is a view from the Highway 100 side. And one thing that came up in our discussion planning commission, and they asked, could you, as a developer, landscape and maintain some of the freeway frontage that occurs in the corner, create a gateway to dine and sort of improve this section of the site? And we said we'd actually welcome the idea, and you know, the example you probably see is the one on Blake and Highway 7, where it says, welcome Hopkins, actually improve that section. So the idea would be the same here, that, but it is where we may need the city's help. Obviously, work with MINDOT is always tricky, but the idea is that we could create a green gateway to Edina and set aside having the buildings identifier and creating this area, so this entrance to dine would have sort of a nice access and visibility to it. And so that sort of gives a quick overview of the building, the project. It's 16,000 square feet. We already have good, strong tenant interest, both from restaurants and retailers, and we're sort of excited to bring this forward. So thank you, and I stand for questions.
All right, questions for Mr. DeVolus. Member Sprague first, or member Bennett?
Mr. DeVolus, I do not note the presence of sidewalk either in the renderings that you're showing or in the aerials, the schenatics or drawings. Can you show me?
Yeah, can you see in the pointer, there'll be a side, now the tree's covered, there'll be a sidewalk along Edina Industrial Boulevard up to the front of the building. This is where the outdoor element, I think you can see the cursor right on yours than I'm using, yeah.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, so it'd be a sidewalk here, and then there'll be a sidewalk running along this portion, and the temple has requested a connection also from theirs too, so that parishioners can walk and use a restaurant, coffee shop, helps the building. So yes, there will be sidewalks on Edina Industrial Boulevard and from the temple on the other side.
Okay, so at this point, they're just not shown on Edina Industrial Boulevard?
My trees cover them up, sorry about that.
Okay, great.
But it doesn't extend east to the intersection, correct?
It could, if you wish. You know, this area will be developed as part of the thing, and if there's a future connection, I will make that connection. But see, the problem is, I don't know where that, it goes back to the MINDOT issue, so I don't want to show it, I can't promise. If we could create a sidewalk here and work it across and work with MINDOT, we would consider that.
Well, you indicate, and maybe it's not accurate, that there is the ability to cross right now from the service station going across, because you have a dash line, you have a crosswalk line there. Is that one just that looks nicer, or is that one that exists there today?
It does not exist there today, but one that may occur depending how we work with MINDOT in traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Member Sprague.
I can just follow up on that. It seems like they need curb extensions at that intersection to make that crosswalk really shine, and I'm talking about right there, yeah, on either side. And then that would allow you, that'll allow for safe travel, and then get that pedestrian all the way down this retail corridor on your side of the street. So to me, that would be a really important element of trying to set up a retail destination on this corner and making it the gateway to these other things. Because we know across the bridge, there's going to be a lot of things happening. Hopefully, we'll start to get some of that traffic coming across the bridge, and then we've got to be able to move it into that retail sector that you're starting in the other corner. In the, in, so the parking lot, are you doing any pervious parking spots interspersed with what you have there? How are we going to manage stormwater effectively?
So we'll manage it at site. We may look at pervious surface within this, because we'll probably keep it within the plan. So the answer is yes, there will be some development, maybe pervious asphalt is what we're thinking, as opposed to pavers, because
Right.
Paver detail, I don't think would really quite work in this situation. So the question is that, yes. And then this, obviously, we are interested in making that connection to the future taken off development. But again, this is where, you know, we just need the city's help in addressing MINDOT, because it sort of falls out of, if I call MINDOT, like never picks up the phone. If someone from council calls or the mayor calls, they get a little more responsive. So are we interested in making this more pedestrian? Yes, but I need help on that, because it is MINDOT territory.
In terms of the, so in terms of the pervious plan, is that, are you interspersing stalls with normal asphalt, or just give me some type of scope?
So what we may do is normally what pervious works best, the drive aisle may be regular asphalt, the parking stalls would be the pervious, because that holds up a little better for parking, but not as well in drive aisles. So the idea is that where there's heavy compaction, that'll be standard asphalt, but the parking areas would be pervious, because that doesn't have the amount of traffic on it. You'd need to keep it loose to allow the water to drain through.
That, to me, that's an important element. And then also, to try to get some type of catch basins or, you know, other green elements into the parking lot, maybe it's just a section, I'm looking at the blue car, that's kind of right below the 16,000-square-foot retail building.
Like right there, this guy, like?
The other side.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of maybe something in there, but I think it, to avoid it looking so sterile and giving it more life, and your architecture has a lot of life and energy to it, that would be another thing to try to get into the project somehow.
And I agree, that's why we're keeping these trees, and I'm hoping that around each of the trees, I create that area you're talking about, that, you know, because if you go back, you know, when Kerry showed pictures, there's two collars of existing trees, one that sits on the east side of the building, one sits on the west side. They're mature trees, and I want to keep those. And the idea that at the base of those trees is sort of be the element you're speaking of, where I can provide that green and break, because that's sort of the element, that's the one feature of the site that I hope to preserve, is those two rows of mature trees.
And you're talking about doing a tree, just around the basin of the trees themselves that are existing, right?
Yeah, and work that zone to provide the break, and you probably have Kerry's pictures there, the existing picture. I can't pull them up, but mine, can I?
So tree trenches, basically, what we're talking about?
That's the idea, working the existing, so. If you go here, so this picture you see on the east side of the building, you saw that row of trees, that, you can see here, that is on the other side of the building also. So the idea is that we keep these trees, trim them, to provide a little better visibility to the building, but maintain this row of trees, and then the same respectfully on the west side of the building. And in conjunction, that would be what you're referring to, the tree trenches and those elements.
And what I was referring to is maybe some additional landscaping within the parking lot itself. It's, I see there's, you know, the drive aisle, there's a little bit of area there, but I was thinking somewhere, somewhere else within the parking lot. So just something to consider as you're, as you're working through the plan.
No, I will consider that, so thank you.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
Sorry, Kerry. Sorry about that.
I'm not into the details so much right now, as, other than, you know, most of your designs I like. I just don't get this use here in a one-story building here. I don't, it's kind of a key spot. The minute you build it, it'll be here for another six years, 100 years, I don't know how long. And it's on a busy corner, you're coming in and out, you're putting retail here, it's one-story. You know, the existing building where I may not think it's particularly attractive, you know, allows people to park underneath it and use it above. So I don't get why I would think that it's a good idea to put retail here. I've never been a very good person with drive-throughs, so why the drive-through and what's the projected use for the drive-through? Because you're just taking parking away when you use the drive-through. We have a building across the Highway 100, the Burgundy, that parks all of its apartments or down below, but it's retail, it parks in its parking lot. It's now overfilled, doesn't have an ability to move parking at all. So you're, where you have at least a potential parking easement going across, you're still taking parking away. So I just don't really get this here. So why this here, and why would I want to change what the comprehensive plan says that you can build here?
Okay, well, part of the reason is that it's a gateway site and has very good Highway 100 visibility. So in terms of just the market, retailers like that idea of having that kind of visual from the freeway. So that, that's what sort of generated the interest to it. The building itself, you know, Wayne's building has come to the point where
It's probably time for it to be, I'm not arguing with that, but just to me, anytime we're putting in one story with a lot of uses and then a big sea of parking, it just, you know, I get the visibility, but a doctor's office might want visibility and have parking underneath or something else, so this just doesn't.
And it's designed to do, see, the, you know, Wayne's building, parking underneath, you know, there's two issues with the area. To replicate that, you know, put the building back on stilts, very expensive, that doesn't work. To do underground parking, I have a high water table, so I can't really have that option. So then, so where do I go to? I have to park it in the surface. And that type of building isn't really built anymore for a bunch of reasons, fire codes, fire truck eagles underneath it, so you really can't replicate that type of building. So you have to go with the type of building that sits on the ground. Site plan-wise, the reason why I tucked the building this side is really to create a wall, a building element, so that you're not viewing across the parking lot, but you're really viewing at the major elements of the building. And it's quite tall, I mean, this building at its end is 24 feet high. The existing building's probably close to that same height too. So why this may have an option of mezzanine, it's really not, it's, you know, plan to be primary one-story, but could have some two-story options to it. The building's designed to be flexible, that it may have a doctor's office in it, so it's not meant to be exclusively retail, it's probably meant to be a mix. It's a little bit like the building on 70th and France, you know, that has a financial and a retailer in it, and this is sort of set up on the same basis. So in terms of those terms, you know, I think this is an appropriate type of redevelopment for the site. In order to reduce the parking, you know, that's why we worked with a shared parking arrangement, because you have two tenant sections. One, that's a church that has zero use of parking during the week, and ourselves, so the idea of reducing the asphalt is using a shared parking arrangement. City of Houston, for example, has it now as a mandatory part of their zoning that you have to do shared parking to reduce parking lots. So we sort of took ourselves to do that. So that was sort of the basis of that. Back to the drive-through, you know, I tucked it behind, it is sort of a request of the tenants.
For what? A drive-through? We've had drive-through for banks, we've had drive-through for dry cleaners, we have drive-throughs for McDonald's, I've got drive-throughs for Starbucks. Our Energy and Environment Committee actually doesn't like drive-throughs, because you've got a car running, waiting, sending out bad gas. So what's this one for, potentially?
So potentially, it is for, on this end, it's probably for, and I can't, I can't state the tenants, because, you know, we're still negotiating leases, but for this one, it would be a sandwich shop, is what, who wants to have both the sit-down dining and a drive-through function to it. So that's what that one is for.
I, I'm glad that you have potentially a different ability to exit the property. I don't like all the curb cuts currently on Edina Industrial Boulevard. Potentially, if this went through, though I don't particularly care not for your design, I always like your designs.
No, thank you.
The use right here on the corner, because I don't like things where there's a traffic light and there's backup to be coming in and out right there. I find that doesn't work very well. Potentially, if you could only exit it with a right turn only, that might solve something for me, but that's my comments. I'll let the rest of the council have a chance.
Member Brindle?
Thank you. I personally don't mind the drive-through. It is in a spot, I think, where, looking at, looking at the exit out to Industrial Boulevard, I would make that a right out.
This, this right and right out?
Yeah.
You're referring to?
I would make that a right out. That's too busy a street to be sitting there waiting to turn left. So if they want to go a different direction, they'll need to come out and go through the temple parking lot, get onto Metro, and then get where they're going. My guess is that if I am coming to work and anticipating that I can get a cup of coffee, I'll go through the drive-through, get my cup of coffee, and go to work. And that would just take me through there, and then I'm, I'm near my office, and that's my direction. But, so that's one thing. Stormwater, it is a high-water table. You mentioned that, that was on my list to talk about. There's a, there's another picture here in the packet we received, property map, and it shows water in the cloverleaf, and, and what it doesn't show is the culverts underneath the highway construction that carries the water from one place to another on Nine Mile Creek. And so I would like some detail as to what, I know we've talked about just moments ago about things you can do, but I'd like to know what you are going to do as far as a buried cistern or, or piping the stormwater from the parking lot over to the lawn, get it, and, and look at some of those measures, because this is a constricted piece of property, and, and there isn't anywhere for the water to go.
This would be a cistern system. So you're correct in your assumption, because that's the way to handle it. So really, what I'm doing, a combination of pervious and cistern
Great.
To reduce the flow impact. Because right now, you know, the existing property, it all surface drains, there is no capture at all. And right now, the existing property is 100% paved. So the idea is that we go with a cistern, pervious, the recycling to help preserve and maintain the trees
Right.
And work under that type of aspect with it. So to answer your question is yes.
Great.
And obviously, as I go through the formal process, you'll have those engineering details and stuff to show that.
Yep, and then sidewalks, bike racks?
Yep.
All of the above, got to be visible, got to be available.
And it will be.
Okay.
Like, I want to make sure that high level, it makes sense, but, you know, this is really meant to sort of be a first step in really meant to sort of be a first step in creating a pedestrian environment and sort of a parking lot area. And this is sort of the first move.
And we are adding more and more sidewalks.
Correct.
In that office park. So this is going to be meant to be walked to.
Precisely.
So for...
And that's, and that's why the building's sort of placed where it is, as opposed in the middle of the site, that it's addressable off Edina Industrial Boulevard and has that direct connectivity and actually has street front, storefront directly on the street, as opposed to pulled back where the building could be at the real estate and the parking would be in the front. That really didn't accomplish where the goals are, where I think this area is going to evolve to over time. So that was sort of the basic approach on this.
Well, I like having the building prominent. And, and as Ben said, you've got such a creative touch that it really is going to enhance that corner. The building itself, is it meant to have two floors?
It may have that option depending on the tenants. Now, when I say two floors, a mezzanine. So officially, it would be a mezzanine. Part of it's to control the amount of parking, because if I go two floors, I'll, I'll kill my parking ratio, but a mezzanine gives me a little bit more flexibility. So these end, end pieces, you know, it's similar to the one I showed you at 70th and France. The end piece may have that option to do that. So it could, and certain points of it. And this was the, this end or the south end would have that possibility.
All right. And everything is accessible from the west side of the building? Nothing's accessible from the east side, right?
Yeah. Everything is set on this side, correct.
Okay.
The backside will have...
Signage.
Signage and windows and connection, because that's a freeway side. Everything's meant to come from the west. Except for this corner tenant, as sidewalks come in here, there may be accessibility from the south side, but not, probably not from the west.
Now, have you thought about any outdoor seating?
Yes.
Because if there's a sandwich shop, where would the outdoor seating be?
So on this end, sandwich shop here, the tenant in this one wants has requested outdoor seating, and it would be right in this area, right in here. So it'd be on the southwest side, which is, in this climate, your best place to work that.
Okay. All right. Let's see, let me look at my notes. And the shared parking with the temple. I am a fan of the right-of-ways that are off of the main street, because it's just a safer way to get from where you're going rather than out and back in. And so thank you for negotiating that. I know that the temple has, has arrangements with the other building owners, the other office buildings, so that when they need parking on that Saturday or Sunday or evening, that they can use the adjacent parking as well.
And, and that worked out, you know, the access, you know, Frontier wasn't as comfortable prior to the access, they didn't, they didn't want to cross traffic, so I respected their opinion. So the temple was more than interested in making that connection. And, you know, in studying the aerials, you know, I looked at weekday photos and our lot was empty and all the other lots had. And I said, here's a perfect example of trying to preserve or conserve asphalt by using a shared parking arrangement where Edina Industrial area tends to be busy Monday through Friday, Saturday, and then Sunday there's nothing.
Right.
It tended to be busy, so the business cycle of this area worked really perfect to allow this kind of use, where you can double up on the same piece of asphalt instead of each one having its own real estate on that.
I think, yep, I think that's it. I just wanted to, I think my big one, other than the stormwater, was really to make sure that, I would like to see this right-out, no-left-out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. I was not on this council when it approved the Burgundy. I was on the council when we approved the comprehensive plan, and I have a pretty good memory of the discussions that we held, as well as a lot of notes. I don't recall why we extended the industrial area, the area-guided industrial with this little stub to the east. That I don't recall. I do recall extensive discussions about retaining the industrial character of part of this area, because it was proving to be such a positive employment center for the city and that beyond retail, I mean, we appreciate the healthcare that's appreciated in this city, the jobs, the retail jobs, but we also know what those jobs pay. And one of the things about the industrial area of this city is the number of jobs that it provides that are beyond minimum wage, beyond low pay, really wonderful jobs. And I know that we had a lot of discussion about that and preserving that industrial area. That again does not answer why we have this little stub to the east. And I think you are dealing with a site that has constraints. We've had, again, discussions about the water to the east of Highway 100, not as much about the water to the west, but it's apparent to the eye as a person is in that area. So I think you've given really good explanations of why subsurface parking, underground parking is not going to work. I know that we were contemplating possibly taller office uses to the north, but again, there are some constraints, I think, that we weren't discussing at that point, that it sounds like you've taken into, in mind with this design. Again, with the Burgundy, that did go through some quiet years, but it's really taken off now, and I think that you, this corner may well be headed for something similar. It is a beautiful design. The building that you designed at 70th and France turned out wonderfully, and congratulations on winning awards for it. I share my colleagues' concern about making the site as pervious as possible, given some of the constraints and challenges that you face and the, just the wetness of that area. What you said about pervious pavement, using it in parking areas and not drive aisles, does fit with what we have heard in presentations from the watershed districts. I think the city of Bloomington has experimented with pervious pavement in particularly its parking lots, and that has been the experience, that they use it again for the parking spaces, but not the drive aisles. Also, with respect to long-term maintenance, I think that works better.
Exactly. It, it's, you know, it looks like oatmeal. And if you get too much traffic or trucks, it'll compact down and lose its ability. So the other thing you can't use in your parking lot is sand, because sand will fill the voids and it'll lose the effect. So you gotta be, you have, have to be a little careful on how you deal with it. If you park in parking zones, it'll serve quite well.
And it does require a specialized form of maintenance, doesn't it?
Correct.
Almost kind of a vacuum cleaning?
Yeah. You want to clean your lots, again, for the same reason, the sand causes it to lose its permeability, so if you sweep and vacuum, it'll be okay.
Well, and given the fact that, I think it is, the Minneapolis Park Board is not using salt on its pathways around the lakes because of that...
Correct.
...issue, I guess in that way, I would like to leave that up to you to come up with the most environmentally friendly way, because use of a lot of salt instead of sand near that much water is probably not a good either.
Precisely. It's a, yeah, there's, there's combinations. In smaller areas like this, there is non-salt solutions, you know, MINDOC can't use it because of the scale of the operation, but in a smaller footprint like this, the switch into what I call a non-salt-based melter, this can be done. I mean, Wisconsin uses cheese, cheese, Brian, in their experiments. So there's a lot of options out there to work a non-salt solution to the lot.
Sure. I appreciate the refinement of the drawings showing better that interconnection with the cross-parking with the temple. I, I think one of my colleagues said something about, Member Brindle, about right-in, right-out. I would prefer that. Member Swenson also raised some concerns about congestion at that, so close to the intersection with TH 100, and...
And I agree. I mean, part of the, and you're right, part of the position why I moved the building that way was to eliminate, you know, because the driveway is right here right now, it's like right at the corner. So part of the decision moving the building to the east side of the site was to get this driveway as far west as possible. So that was exactly considerations what you're saying and how to work the site plan to allow that. To prevent this right turn right there, it gets it further on, aligns it with the gas station to at least get logic out of the intersections there. So we're taking a two to one, and we're actually adding one on the backside. So we're taking basically the curb cut here and putting it against the temple, you know, on the temple property, provide that as a second way out. So I think that'll really help in terms of that traffic pressure on the site.
Benefits beyond parking, the parking benefits and also the site access and avoiding congestion. On the drive-through, not a real fan, particularly not a fan when they adjoin a residential area. In this instance, you're bounded on one side by a freeway exit ramp, and so I don't have the similar concerns that I do in some other settings. But I do understand that environmentally, with the exhaust that gets produced...
Yeah, they're not, yeah, I mean, they're not perfect, but they're sort of necessarily in trying to make this not feel like a drive-through dominated site. This brick wall you see on the east side, that wall continues and entirely screens the drive-through. So the idea is it, it'll look like an extension of the building, and so the drive-through will only be visible from within the site itself, so that you don't have that feel of, you know, building drive-throughs in asphalt, so. It may not eliminate the, the, what I call the environment, at least visually, this wall continues all the way across, and then this trees, there's a row of pine trees, those are going to be maintained on the, on the north side of the property. So it really is somewhat hidden from view unless you really know to use it and make it a destination within the site.
So mitigate aesthetically. It still does not necessarily address some of the congestion and the, and emissions issues. I really appreciate what you're proposing with the trees. My concern, couple of concerns about PCD-2 and PUD. I know that with 70th and France, the developer agreed to a definition of use of the building that fit with what you were proposing for parking.
Yep.
And that may become necessary and recommended in this instance. And then I have one very strong concern about the placement of the building, and that is, with the proposal for 12 feet setback from Edina Industrial Boulevard, I don't see how that leaves you really adequate room for a sidewalk on a boulevard. And, and so in terms of what you're requesting, would be requesting for variances, that would be really my only concern, but a very strong concern, is just that there be adequate space. We know that roads can be widened with 12 feet, there isn't much room for change.
And if we can tweak it a few feet, but, you know, it's sort of a balance that I want to anchor the corner and understand yours about giving some breathing room, so maybe there's a little bit of play. But what I didn't want to do was pull it so far back that I sort of defeat the purpose of creating the gateway. So understood, and, but I think there'll be a number we can get at that'll make this work.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
One more question.
Sure.
Kind of on what Member Bennett just asked. On the south end, toward Edina Industrial Boulevard, there is a significant overhang on the building. How, how much of an overhang is that?
It won't hang over the property line.
No, I know, I know. But in looking at, in looking at the site plan, I can see the roof go out there, but what we need to turn the page to find out is that that roof has an overhang.
Yeah. And the idea is that, you know, maybe an eight to 10-foot overhang, you know, part of it's to create a little drama with the architecture. The other part is to shade the glass, because it's south-facing, so it gives me some solar control.
But that also, that also demonstrates that eight to 10 feet that is there.
Yeah.
To give room for a sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a follow-up, but you haven't had a chance to speak. Would you like to speak first?
All right, either way, I can certainly go. On the positive side, and I don't have many negatives, just, but, you know, I noticed the planning commission too was very laudatory regarding your design work. That's one thing we always see from you on a consistent basis is outstanding design work. And then materials usage too is always excellent, and they noted that stone and glass work as well as being something that they were very pleased with. I thought the colloquy you had with Member Swenson was important in terms of the height of the building and why you're limited to the height that you, that you have, both with respect to the high-water table and the, and what happens, even if you could go up to a second story with respect to your parking ratio. So you're underparked now, I thought it was a creative thing to do, to talk to the temple and develop a shared parking, cross-easement, at least a gentleman's agreement on that. And of course, I think that's going to have to be an important part of whatever you come back with here.
It'll be...
You're going to have to have some kind of an agreement or a contingent agreement.
No, that we are, we will go to a formal lease easement agreement. Correct. So we met with them already to talk through, but yeah, it'll be codified, because it, it needs to be that, establish it going into the future.
I can see your concerns about moving the building too far to the north, because in that it could affect the, the drive-through as well as some of your other parking spaces. And as Member Brindle noted, there is some room there for sidewalk in front of the building. And people should be able to walk by and see what people have in their pants, right? They can look, see what they're doing.
Well, you know, what I hope with this is that, given what Scott's doing across the way that that bridge, you know, right now it's a separate, becomes a link. And this building on the west side is sort of an anchor that sort of responds to what's going to be occurring on the east side, and that eventually someday that bridge gets upgraded, there's really a flow that occurs between the two halves in Edina in that area. And that's why I'm sort of important, putting that building in the corner, so sort of give you an arrival destination after crossing the bridge. And, you know, hopefully as things evolve, others sort of follow that lead. And so what Scott's doing to the west, east, hopefully starts getting reflected on the west side of 100.
I like the notion that you're creating more vitality on that corner with, with retail component instead of what's there now. You do see this building on stilts, but the one that we're going to talk about next is almost invisible when you drive by it. And so I think that whole corner could get activated by these two projects if, if they're eventually approved. So when you come back on, strike that, I'm going to reserve judgment on the drive-through until I hear what the proposed use is.
Okay.
I'll, I'll want to see that, understand Member Swenson's concerns, Member Bennett's comments that it's a, it's actually a good spot for a drive-through if you're going to have one, but let's find out what you want it for first. You had a preference, you had indicated a preference for PUD over PCD-2, and I wanted to know why you were thinking that way.
And another reason was 70th and France, you went to, which was sort of a nice process, because we were able to just work together. I mean, either I'm flexible with, but it was, it was such a successful process on 70th and France, and it yielded a quality building, a nice development, that I thought that flexibility could be applied to there, because obviously that was the first time that was done, and, you know, the results stand for itself, and hopefully we can sort of keep that. So that was from experience, working so well, that's why I thought this may give the same idea going forward with this.
All right, good. Well, if you do decide to come back, or the owner decides to come back and, and request this in a formal application process, other colleagues have mentioned it too, but I think you ought to think about maximizing the landscaping on the site. You did a good job of that at 70th and France. It was one of the key things, I think, for me and other council members, is how you were going to not only activate the street with retail, but kind of embrace the street and accent it with, with more planting. So think about that as well. And then stormwater management, I think that's been adequately covered by other folks on the council. The right-in, right-out, I could, I, I really like the idea that you've gone to a single curb cut wider and single and further to the west. I think that's important. We might think about, you know, the right-in, right-out issue relative to daytime hours, you know, 7:00...
Correct.
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Other than in that 12-block, 12-hour block, it might be okay to, to turn left coming out of there. But we can think that through with a traffic study and other things that you, that you do later on. So overall, my thoughts are the same as the planning commission, but I think we like what we're seeing so far, and eager to see what you come back with based on these comments from both the planning commission and the council. Member Swenson.
Thank you.
I have a question for Carrier Roger. What happens if you have a shared parking agreement with the temple and the temple decides to move to North Minneapolis and it becomes a business that's there Monday through Friday, fully parked?
The shared, excuse me, the shared parking agreement would not go away. It would still remain in place.
But how do you, if, but yet, it doesn't go away, but the demands on both sides are too much for the Monday through Friday parking. There is no solution, though. You say that it doesn't go away, but there is no solution to what to do with the problem.
Then it would be a problem, agreed. Yes.
Okay. And what happens if this becomes, let's say, the restaurant that goes in on the south end is fabulously successful and everyone wants to go there Saturday night, and temple's on? We have that same issue all of a sudden, and there is no solution for it? Because there is no proof of parking that we can call for this?
I've not heard any of any, correct.
Have you ever, what happens if you were to make the drive-through, the proof of parking and the drive-through had to close down if you had a parking issue?
You could do that. You could do that, I don't know how many spaces you'd.
What happens to the lease that the building owner has with the drive-through tenant when all of a sudden the proof of parking is called and their drive-through is shut down?
That would be a problem between the owner and the tenant.
Okay, so it doesn't become my problem?
No.
Or the city's problem? You know, I just, Burgundy Place isn't working right now very well. We're trying to figure out, you know, how to make sure that that, the parking works there. They've got some great tenants when it was empty forever. This looks like I'm creating this and I don't even, I'm not even making the parking that I should be making just on the site. So I don't have a huge comfort level with that.
One way we could address the parking is similar to what we did at the Seventieth Street through the PUD is look at specific uses and eliminate uses that are going to drive a parking count that's over and above what they can provide on their site. So that might be one way to, to approach that, to make sure that they do have enough parking on their site.
And what uses tend to drive their parking count, just so we can have this part of the discussion publicly?
Yeah, primarily it's going to be restaurant space and restaurant seating.
Those are the, it sounds like those are the tenants that are interested right now. So to follow up on your comments, it might be nice to have an alternative that, that doesn't have a drive-through. It's going to give your, your site a lot more breathing room. And it seems like we see projects that come up on these tight sites and they're trying to do everything and they take one little element away and then all of a sudden everything else works a little bit, is a little more balanced and works together more synergistically. So that, I echo your concerns, I think, and a Plan B that would eliminate the drive-through would give you your proof of parking. You'd have the setback in the front, some wiggle room on that. And you could do, add more landscaping to the, to the site, flush it up, reduce pervious. There's a lot of benefits that would follow from that. So again, something to consider. We can also approve it, we could approve it with that and then have these various conditions, but it seems like it would be overall more flexible for the uses if you could just maybe eliminate that element. So just an alternative to consider.
I have one other comment, that I still would prefer to see the two sites put together and designed so that they work better together. And that could eliminate some of my concerns too.
Okay, the park, you know, Carrie answered the parking, you know, that will be codified, so you do have that and those spaces will be defined. In terms of doing research, Houston has it now as part of their zoning ordinance. It's a requirement that you have to share parking, so that may be a good place to do research. And that's why I base that a little bit upon that idea. I like the idea of the proof of parking. And the tenant would know that upfront, if there is an issue, this is what occurs. So that's not a bad approach on that basis, so that's understood.
It may depend on what, what's been going through my mind as you've been mentioning that is the kind of restaurant. A sandwich shop is not going to generate the hour-long park, the two-hour-long park that a restaurant would. It's going to be a quick in and out, you know, half hour or less. So I, I think those parking places will turn over a little quicker. So it may be that, that we dictate the type of restaurant that belongs here for that purpose.
And that's how that PUD works, like let's say I did a Redstone in there, and it'd be right, I'd blow out my parking in two minutes because that'd be a two-hour dining experience and it wouldn't work. A sandwich shop, and I'll use the example like a Potbelly's, that's a fast turnover and doesn't create the same type of parking demand, so absolutely.
We used to think that coffee shops were fast in and out. And now if you go to a lot of them, people are parked there for hours. So you might think the use is the right use, but the way it's used changes, so.
Understood, thank you.
I have a question for Carrie about, just, and Chad, about MIND coordination because I think part of the, the key elements of making this a successful project is figuring out that corner and those crossings. So what, what's the process we would go through to help coordinate? Are we going to do a study, they do a study, we coordinate with MIND? Can you just talk a little bit about that?
I think we do both. It'd be required as part of the agreement, usually a traffic study with any development. And as that study got completed, we'd, we'd get in MIND involved and see what they're looking at, where we can make improvements to shorten those pedestrian crossings, like you brought up that those corners are almost a free right. They're not quite, but we could definitely improve and shorten those distances. Today, there's only a sidewalk on the south side of the bridge.
Right.
So, you know, you're, that movement to the south to get to the gas station would be improved that way. But eventually you'd like to see the bridge with pedestrian access on both sides. So we definitely begin that conversation with them. And maybe we could tie it in with the conversations we're having right now, the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail on the other side.
It's really relevant considering we just approved Pentagon rezone to PUD and all the work that's going to be happening on Seventy-seventh on that side. The pedestrian environment that's going to be created is going to be incredible compared to what's there today. So it's, it's good timing.
Why don't you make a preliminary call to the West Metro District Engineer from MIND, visit with him. Is that Scott Peterson, I think? Talk to him preliminarily about it and see if we can get any assistance from them or get them interested in this whole motion. I think they would be. Member Brindle, do you have another comment? Okay, we talked about the, the parking situation at Burgundy. You know, there's a lot of cars there, but I'm not sure there's too many cars or that people aren't able to find a parking spot. It's, there's, I don't know if anybody else.
Going over to Bar Engineer.
No, they're going to Walsh Title.
Or Walsh Title, thank you. There's a sign actually now into the Walsh Title parking lot that says Walsh Title Parking Only.
Okay, all right, thanks, Mr. DeVolus.
Thank you very much for your.
Thank you.
Director Teague, next matter, 5108 Edina Industrial Boulevard.
Okay, as we're familiar with the site, I'll move through this quickly. This is just a quick outline of the existing building. You recall they were in for a sketch plan, oh, within the last year or so, to remodel the building into retail uses. This is a look at the existing building that's on the site today. Again, the same zoning and comprehensive plan issues stand. What they're proposing this time is to tear the building down and build these two new, two new structures as shown on the screen here. More of your, your traditional suburban-type retail mall with the parking in between the street and the building itself. This is, was the site plan that was reviewed by the Planning Commission. Their primary concern was with circulation in and around the site, especially with the drive-through. The applicant has attempted to address some of those issues. They've made the building a little bit smaller, added some green space out front. Otherwise generally the, the site would remain as, as proposed. They are proposing to add sidewalks along Metro Boulevard and Edina Industrial Boulevard. Currently there's none out there, so it would be quite an improvement over the existing conditions. But again, Planning Commission expressed a lot of concern in regard to the site circulation with this site. With that, oh, just quickly, the zoning standards. The proposal that you saw there, the site plan, meets all of our PCD-2 zoning standards for number of parking spaces setbacks. So it would be a code compliant under the PCD-2 or, PCD-2 zoning district. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Teague? All right, let's bring the folks from Fraunshu forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dave Anderson with Fraunshu, 7101 West Seventy-Eighth Street is my address. And thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight and speak to the proposal that Carrie has outlined. Just real briefly, we were at the Planning Commission on February 12th where both of these projects and the previous discussion took place. So we did come back here tonight with some refinements to the, the use and the proposal that we're talking about here tonight. Just listening to the previous conversation, a couple of things that have led us to this point and as this plan has evolved, we know this area is a very active business center, a lot of office use to the north, a lot of pedestrian traffic walking down Metro Boulevard, literally in the boulevard now walking to retail south of Edina Industrial Boulevard to get to retail and so forth. That's one of the observations we've made, there's, there is a lot of traffic, certainly through this area, and a lot of pedestrians walking through this area. So we think we can make it a more pedestrian-friendly site. And that's with the sidewalk access coming from the north and then running east and west and also bringing folks into the site, the pedestrians that are now there. And also just making that intersection of Metro Boulevard and Edina Industrial Boulevard for people that are crossing either north or south, being able to prepare to cross that street. So we've added some enhancements there to allow that to, to happen. If we have an, do we have an overhead capability? Right here, yeah. Thank you. Just a quick discussion about site access, and we'll go back to the site plan. We are proposing to close this west yearly point of access onto Edina Industrial Boulevard. And through the site plan design, which our site designer Nick Spriedes will speak about here momentarily, we have the opportunity to align this future access point, the one access onto Edina Industrial Boulevard with the west entry to the convenience store service station to the south. So we think that will be an improvement relative to just general access, limiting it to one access onto Edina Industrial Boulevard and maintaining our other point of access on Metro Boulevard. So relative to access points, we think we're solving and creating a better situation there. And then we'll talk momentarily about site circulation, site access, if we could revert back to the site plan. One issue we were just hearing a lot of discussion about, and that is parking. One of our primary focuses here was to make sure we don't create a parking problem. So we're parked at a ratio of about seven spaces per thousand. Our focus is going to be restaurant and food-related users. So those users are going to have a high demand for parking. We understand the situation in this neighborhood because we are very present in this neighborhood and we see what's happening to the south with the current center that has Eddington's and, and other food-related uses. We have paid attention to the need and demand there is going to be on parking for this site. And really from the user's perspective, tenant perspective and customer perspective, we're going to have to ensure that that parking is there and available. So we had a discussion with the Planning Commission. There was concerns about us over-parking the site. We had 66 spaces before, we've reduced it down to 61 spaces. So we have looked at things we can do to create more outdoor spaces for seating. Again, our site designer will talk about some of the, you know, some of the aesthetic enhancements to the buildings, but also outdoor seating and green space. We've taken and reduced the parking slightly to allow for more of that to be part of the site plan. So we are paying attention to those kinds of details, but we can't understate enough the need to adequately park a site that's going to be driven by retail use. So those are the main points, I think, at this juncture. We'll certainly answer any questions that the council has. Nick Spriedes is going to make a few comments about the site plan and circulation issues.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nick Spriedes, Spriedes Reiner's Architects of Bloomington, Minnesota. Always a pleasure to present to you all. In the Designers Project, this is the second time we've been through the sketch plan review, so we've seen you before. And we highlighted a few items that were commented on as well as touched on by the Planning Commission. The traffic circulation, the drive-through crossover, pedestrian access, reduced parking, added landscaping and more common space. The area that, and I'll try and work with the cursor as Mr. DeVolus did, one of the major changes that we've made is to add, and I'm drawing a line here, to help direct our drive-through traffic. One of the concerns was traffic coming off of Metro Boulevard and making a sharp right turn into a drive-through lane, which really wasn't working very well. So our goal is to circulate the site and bring traffic around and into the drive-through from that fashion so that we can preserve the two-way traffic on the north side of the building. As I was talking to Mr. Anderson today, I think we've done about 22 site plans to try to work, a workable circulation. It's a difficult site. But believe that we've achieved it by the ability to pull the second building back and create a double lane of parking and then reducing the size of the building as David suggested to create some pedestrian opportunities or seating areas outside of our restaurants, some landscaping. One of the items we talked about today for pedestrian access was perhaps creating in parallel or an extension of the two sidewalks on the inside of these two buildings that would directly tie to the sidewalk. I'm using my cursor here to define this area and this area as additional passageways for pedestrians as we've done over here on the east end of the site, so we'll consider that. As far as creating more pedestrian-friendly, the sidewalks, larger green spaces, we believe that the north and the east edges of our property need to be well landscaped, which will also help with our stormwater management. The stormwater management in general is going to be, as you've discussed in the other project, perhaps the impervious on the parking areas and the harder drive-through areas, or the drive lanes to be a more durable material. As far as the curb cuts, we talked about the alignment with the gas station and reducing the two on our south edge to one. And then, and the landscaping. So I think it's, we've covered all the items that we've been, that we've discussed with the Planning Commission and as well as you. Let's go to the rendering for a moment, talk about materials here. There we are. We're proposing a combination of brick and some stone materials, not unlike the, the new Starbucks development at Centennial Lakes, the grocery stores that are being constructed along France Avenue. That would be the character and style of the buildings we're talking about. And providing pedestrian and activity outside of the building on the sidewalk is obviously a goal. I think that's about all, if we're here for questions, if you have them.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Spriedes. Member Sprague, either for Mr. Anderson or Mr. Spriedes?
Thank you. So part of creating that pedestrian environment is pulling those buildings up to the street. What's the objection to that in terms of the use in the site plan?
The objections to that is that the parking entirely on the backside did not, we did not have enough room to fit the double lane and our parking counts didn't, didn't meet the zoning that we're proposing. That was our primary, and the circulation. I don't know that it's, we're opposed to it, it's just that it wasn't actually working.
And, but you're not proposing to go to PUD where you could, you're doing PCD-2?
Correct.
Not PUD?
Correct.
And as the previous applicant stated, PUD gives you some more flexibility in exchange for meeting these other prerogatives, the things that we're talking about in site plan review anyway, pedestrian friendliness, sustainability, circulation. So I'm just wondering if, to me, it, it seems like, especially with what's going on next door, that trying to, to meet the, the standards that are in the PUD and getting a more coordinated development along this corridor would be beneficial both to the city and to the applicants, to the people that are going to be experiencing this, this space, the users. Because yes, there are sidewalk links, but there, it's an old-school design where they're walking through parking fields. walking through parking fields, and it feels really odd with respect to what's right next door to you. My other concern, and I'm sure this would come up in the application with Mr. Milner in engineering, is the location of your entrance and exit close to where a new curb cut's being proposed in the site next door. I don't think that plays well either. Seems like if parking's the issue, we don't want you to be over-parked. There's proof of parking options that could be available as well, that would allow you to meet the need, but also create this positive pedestrian environment and streetscape that we're thinking of when we're talking about PUD and some of these other tools. So, I guess I'm throwing that out there for you to consider, and to me, that's kind of the crux of the issue.
Looking at the rendering of the buildings, kind of the angle that they're viewed, would you bring that up, please, Jennifer? The picture, that one, that one right there. I am not fond of what it looks like on top. It looks unfinished up on top. Now, I know that somebody walking up to the door is not going to see that, but I see it here, and it's, it's part of the design that, that just kind of goes, hmm, I think there's something more that can be done there to, I mean, the building could be a little taller, and it could be more a finished look on top. My guess is that there are mechanicals up there, but I don't, I don't want to think about mechanicals when I come up to this building. I want it to be welcoming, I want it to be pretty, I want it to embrace the corner. And, and right now, it, the top just looks a little too utilitarian for me. So, whatever you can do there would be appreciated, whether it's maybe, you know, you could even do a podium, you could step it back. And, and that alone would, would give you a chance to continue that awning around or, or something like that around the, around the crown of, of that building. And why two buildings? They're so small, at least they look so small, on a small piece of property. I think you mentioned at the planning commission, it's 1.3 acres. That's pretty little, and it's all hardscape. So, how come two buildings?
Mayor, can I address that now?
Sure.
It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful question. And it's precisely because of what you just mentioned, it's a small site. This is 1.3 acres. The, the site adjacent to us that was just discussed is slightly smaller than this site. But, it's, it's a small site that requires the scale of smaller buildings that allow for the circulation and adequate parking. So, the key is going to be in a quality design of the buildings that speak to, you know, the elements of the architecture and the landscaping and the pedestrian orientation, not too dissimilar from the building at 70th and France you mentioned. It's a small building on a small site, but very well done. And that's the opportunity we have here with two small, distinct buildings that work well together on a small site. So, that adequately parks itself, and it functions properly in a retail, commercial environment. So, that's really what we're trying to get at with this design, why we're so sensitive to parking, why we're so sensitive to traffic flow, because we recognize that's what's going on in this area. It's a combination of a lot of vehicle activity and a lot of new pedestrian activity, and we're recognizing both of that, trying to balance it.
You know, as I look at this, it, it reminds me a little bit of the, the buildings that are connected by a, by a roof on Gus Young Lane. And the parking lot there is very compact, it's very crowded. Half the time I go there, I don't park in that parking lot, I park at Devani's, which, and luckily, they welcome parking for that, for that establishment. But that, it just, it just has the look for me, to me, that, that it's crowded. Looking at the building on the west, the smaller of the two, there is a crosswalk at the northwest corner. I'd like to see a matching crosswalk at the southwest corner, because in both cases, if in fact that drive-through is positioned there, the pedestrian is crossing the drive-through lane. So, I think, I think we need to give pedestrians the best chance they've got to get to that main door, which looks like it's at the southwest corner. Now, in the planning commission discussion, Mike Platter was trying to flip this 180 and put the smaller building on the east end, so that if, at least this is how I interpreted his question. And so, if I'm coming in off of Edina Industrial Boulevard, then I could get into the queue of the drive-through right there. And so, so I would be in the queue facing north, then I can go around the drive-through, and I place my order, I get my order as I'm facing west, and I proceed out of the parking lot. That seems a lot simpler to me than getting myself in off of Edina Industrial Boulevard, traveling around the first building to get into the drive-through in the second building, going around the drive-through, and then coming back around to try, then get out. I'd rather see something that's much more direct in and out, if you're going to have a drive-through here. So, I'd love to see if that's a feasible option for a drive-through. I'm an uneducated, non-architect, so I'm not even supposing that I can tell you that's possible. But it just seems like it's possible, just looking at this. I'm always looking for bike racks, so I want to know where the bike rack is going to be. And since you have two buildings, I'm going to assume you're going to have two bike racks. And then, I would of course love to see the buildings hug the street, but if you feel that this is the best compromise to get your customers in and parked safely, then that's what we have that fits this site. But I do want to see whether the drive-through would work the other way. Let's see. There is a crosswalk. Yeah, I want more green space. I have to have more green space here. So, if there is a way, there, there, there's got to be a way to put an island in here with a tree or something, or the garden here or there, just a couple of them here or there, and it will kind of soften the corners and, and give you some space to, to absorb water. And as I said to Mr. DeVolus earlier, I'd like a specific stormwater plan. Is it cisterns? Is it piping? What is it? And, and, and how, you know, how is that going to work? Because the water table at the, at that site is high, I'm assuming the water table at this site is high. So, those are my questions.
They are. I can respond to most of them. We could do the overhead view or even the site plan that we've submitted. The landscaping, existing landscaping around the north and east, we believe this space between the other development and ours is something we need to work on together. That's, that's a common zone that will enhance both properties. We've more than likely under-demonstrated landscaping on the boulevards. We will definitely meet code or exceed code when we can.
Thank you for the sidewalks.
Indeed. And, and we believe pedestrian, pedestrian access is important to the eventual tenants as it is to the city, so we definitely want to address that. I want to show a diagram of an earlier site plan, or at least a response to the planning commission, when we flipped the two buildings and we tried to get the drive-through, as you can see, coming in and circulating around, just the, I've spent a fair amount of time studying drive-throughs on various projects, and it has a certain path that I have to follow because of where the driver sits, and certain corners work better than others. But the site essentially gets cut in half, and tenants, in order to orient the building, we end up with a lot of circulation between the buildings that was essentially wasted, trying to circulate around, and cars impacting the main point of access on Industrial Boulevard, Edina Industrial Boulevard. Our parking count dropped significantly in order to achieve that. And through all the studies, and I have about 20 of them here, the site plan that we've arrived at works probably the best in terms of the circulation. So, we did, we did research it based on the comments from the planning commission and studies that we've done. And with only two points of access and a narrow site, we just had to, we had to find something that also works for the potential tenants. Our primary tenant at this point is probably a coffee shop, so not as long of a wait as a, as a restaurant would be, a little more quickly. So, this really is the best that we can do from the studies that we've done.
You know, speaking of a coffee shop, and I'm sure you've been there, and if you haven't, I trust you'll go to Gus Young Lane.
I've been there.
And experience that queue, that coffee queue. It is, I mean, it's nothing short of amazing. And so, how, how to accommodate that many cars in a queue? Because they're all coming at once between about 6:30 and 8:00 every morning. So, it's, it's a real challenging situation.
It is.
And I wouldn't want that queue to be on Metro Boulevard or Edina Industrial Boulevard.
So, hopefully I've addressed your primary concerns, but thanks.
Where's the bike racks?
Bike racks, we'd have one on each building, for sure. Don't know where yet, but you know, I can, I can tell you they'll be there. Any, you know, we've, a lot of color choices, we can, we will have them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I too heard the discussion with the planning commission, and one of the things that stuck with me is this discussion of whether the site is urban or not urban, and does it work to pull buildings up to the street? And I know it's a little bit above where we are right now, and I know that not every project works well, but I do think that that is a direction that we are moving toward. Yes, we're a hybrid community, and certainly you can go farther west in the community and find some sites that might remind you of communities that are really, truly suburban. But we also have, this is actually more in the urban part of town. We know that people are moving to this part of town and working in this part of town who want to be able to go and come by bus, other forms of transit. They want to be able to maybe arrive in an automobile and then move around on foot. You yourselves have commented on how you're observing more pedestrian movement in the area. And so, that principle actually is meeting a need that we're seeing. You mentioned, I think, the design or the materials at Starbucks, and that was modeled after the Whole Foods that was constructed previously on the other side of the entrance lane from France to Centennial Lakes. You'll notice that there is no parking between the side of Whole Foods, the west side of that building, and France Avenue. There is a rather generous area for pedestrians. And so, around town, that's what we're really trying to get to, is to encourage, we know that people are moving around on foot, we want them to be safe, and we also want them to be comfortable. And we anticipate that, based on what we're not only seeing in other communities, but in our community, that that's going to encourage people to move around more on foot and encourage other people who may not be doing so today to do it also. So, I look at this design, and I, looking at the design before the planning commission and the one that you have in front of us this evening, it looks like overall you've reduced the square footage by 715 square feet, and that's with two buildings that will total 8,735 square feet. So, I understand the constraints of the site. We say to some folks when we're talking about residential reconstruction that not every building fits on every site, and I know that, that we've kind of had two of those discussions this evening. And what I see with this one is I see a very vehicle-centric design. There was some comment just a short while ago about wanting to move the vehicles around and wanting to provide for the parking. And you're doing that, and I understand how hard you're working to do that. I also do see some improvement with the Boulevard, a little bit additional green space. I still don't see how people are going to be very comfortable moving, well, maybe on the northwest corner. But as Member Brindle pointed out, if the access to the building is the southwest, then are people going to come from the northwest corner, around the north of the building, the full southern side of the building, it looks like, okay, access? So, in other words, they're sort of coming around the diagonal of the building to get to the entrance. And human behavior doesn't usually work that way. So, then, do they try to walk down the side of the vehicles in the drive lane, the order lane, pickup lane, for the drive-through to pick up? So, I think there's still, however many designs you've gone through, I don't think you're there yet. I don't think that people who are on foot are necessarily going to comfortably access things. I do see also that you've added the marked crosswalk over on the east side. Appreciate the comments about pervious. We know that there are issues with, we know that there's some cost involved, we know that there's the maintenance involved, and now tonight I learned something new, and that's about the salt, or the sand, actually. So, we know that you'll have that challenge going forward. I share Member Brindle's concern about the design. I think we had, maybe not comment this evening, but comment when these were paired before the planning commission, about how some of the elevation on another building addressed the mechanicals. And particularly when, don't object to a shorter building, but then you will have folks in other buildings looking down. So, you will have a facade on the top of your building that you might not have if all the buildings in the area are around the same height. And so, that the aesthetics of that become a little more important than they would if you were matching, if, if all the buildings in the area were around similar height. An example of some lengths that we're gone to with rooftop mechanicals would be the proposal for 65th and France, and they do have a taller building adjacent to them, and we're taking that into account. But again, you will have taller buildings in the area around this. And I think I reserve, reverb about half a minute, depending on what my, else my colleagues have to say, but those are my concerns.
Thank you. Member Swenson.
You know, when you came before us, before you were taking down part of what I would agree with you is not an attractive building, now you have the opportunity to build new, though, now that you've decided to take the building down completely. And I would tell you that one, the last thing that we passed that was a drive-through was a 12-stack Starbucks, which we probably should have also said to Mr. DeVolus, because there are 12 stacking spaces in the Starbucks at France. We also asked them to move their Starbucks up so that it was as close to the street as possible, and the only thing that divided it from the street was actually the drive aisle. Whole Foods moved up to the street, the retail across from Pinstripes moved up to the street, Byerly's moved up to the street, they weren't originally going to move up to the street. So, to me, you have a new opportunity to build something brand-new, and this looks like something that would be built back in 1960 or '70 and not what currently is happening So, drive-through, 12 stacking, and there's got to be a better site plan than this for me, and that's all I've got.
This is obviously your property. If you, PCD II were approved, you meet all the setback, all the requirements for the city standards under PCD II. So, we're a bit into design issues, and that's always somewhat subjective, it's a little bit tough. There are some, some elements here, though, that you could work on a little bit, I think it'd been mentioned by other folks, on that... I think it'd been mentioned by other folks, on, on that north-south sidewalk along Metro Boulevard. And this is the same issue I think we faced at that Starbucks by Whole Foods, and that is, you gotta, you gotta have a little stub sidewalk to get across the berm and then over to the main door on the west building. I think we had them, not cross-hatchet, but they used a different kind of material there, like a paver material, just to distinguish the pedestrian crosswalk from the, from the drive-through. So, on the drive-through, I can see where if they come in on the present curb cut that you've got, if they circulate all around the east side of the, the east building, and then, and then kind of queue up, so they don't interfere with the traffic pattern of somebody coming in off Metro Boulevard, they can, they can slide in there, so you've got room for six, and then you've got some queuing room along the north side there. I think you want to make sure that you don't allow somebody to come in off Metro Boulevard and try to do a U-turn into the drive-through. So, don't, don't let that happen. And that, you know, you've got a little bit of extra room there, you could try to landscape that up pretty significantly, so that you've really got that, that if this were to go forward, that you really try to pop that drive-through with some nice landscaping. You've got the same pedestrian connectivity issue between the two buildings. You've got, I don't know if that's intended to be sidewalk, or car bunkering, or what it's supposed to be there on, on the south end, but even you need to, you need to connect those buildings better from a pedestrian standpoint. So, that's right, that's right. I don't even, I can't tell how wide that is, but it looks like it, maybe it's five feet.
It's five.
Yeah, so.
It is a rezoning, so.
Yeah.
It isn't that, he means.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, it's hard discretion whether or not to approve the rezoning, but I think Member Bennett made a great point earlier, and that is, how did this little stub area get to be industrial? And because there's nothing, I mean, everything to the north of it really is office, or the temple, or all the way to, all the way to 70th. So, to me, this has nothing to do with what's going on to the west, to, in the industrial, commercial industrial area. So, zoning, I think, is something, rezoning is something we have to carefully consider, whether it's, you know, whether it's this project or some other project. So, another thing that's hard, I think, is, you use CAD, is that right? Mr. De Volus draws by hand. It's, it's hard. I mean, when you, when you put these two together, you know, the hand drawing almost becomes three-dimensional, and it's, it's, it's hard to judge how they'll work with each other. The compatibility, you, you can't tell because just of the tools that you use in your trade. And, and it may be just fine, there's no criticism of, of your architecture, or your, your work that you do, it's just, it makes, it makes it harder for us, in a way, because we see, and we've seen, we see CAD all the time, and then when it becomes reality, we think, wow, that's, that looks great, you know? So, it's tough for me to sit and judge whether this is old-school, new-school. You know, I, I see that sea of parking around there. I think, like over at Supertarget, we, we made them break up their parking surfaces with plantings. And because you're so overparked, you should think about that, too. You know, using some of the space you have for parking to break up that sea of asphalt, along with the pervious, impervious issue. So, those are just a few of my comments for the evening. Otherwise, I, I get it why you put two small buildings on this site, that, that all makes sense to me. I like the idea that you've got one curb cut on Edina Industrial Boulevard, and I think it's a real plus that you've got that, that in-out on Metro Boulevard as well. That's a real positive sign, too. So, any other comments, folks? I hope that was helpful. All right. Thank you. All right, we've got a bunch of folks from the chamber, their crack team is in the back, waiting to hear us address this next issue, which Manager Neil is going to handle tonight. He's got his Edina green tie on.
I do.
Or else he's still wearing that from the St. Patrick's Day parade over in St. Paul.
No, 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 no ties on that day. Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. The ordinance before you tonight is called Ordinance 2014-4, establishes a local lodging tax for the purposes of funding a convention and visitors bureau, which we also call a destination marketing organization, which we, I think at this time, are also calling Explorer Edina. The, the chamber has, Chamber of Commerce has approached the city and asked the city council to adopt this ordinance to establish this destination marketing organization so that the city can compete more vigorously and, and really more precisely for tourism dollars and, and really commercial spending and consumer spending dollars in, in the larger metro area, but also in a larger regional area in the Midwest. If, if the council adopts this ordinance tonight on first reading, and I would advise you to do first reading only tonight, you would establish a local lodging tax of 3%. That lodging tax would, would, as it sounds, would apply to people in the business of providing lodging for money to others, primarily hotels. We would have a chance to review the proposed bylaws and organizational structure of the proposed destination marketing organization after tonight and prior to the, the next reading of the council, which we could schedule as early as April 22nd. We've had a, a previous discussion with the chamber on this subject earlier, excuse me, earlier this spring, on March 4th, there seemed to be indication of support from council about it at that time, and so that's why it's on your agenda tonight. One issue that we have discovered just today, actually, through the really quite thorough legal work of Jerry Gilligan, is that there is provision in the development agreement for the Marriott Residence Inn, that was developed in 1989, that says if the city ever adopts a lodging tax, the, the computation formula of their public facility charge that they pay to Edinburgh Park Fund changes. So, right now, that, that fee is $3,449 per month, and if we do adopt a lodging tax, it changes that formula to $15 per unit per month, which decreases it. So, it's a decrease in total revenue on an annual basis from $41,308 to $23,940, which is a, a difference of about $17,000. In the ordinance before you tonight, however, there is, and it's provided for in state statute, a 5% administrative fee that comes off of the, of the total proceeds. The chamber has done some due diligence and some projections on the finances of this ordinance. They're projecting, in the first full year of its, of its implementation, revenues of approximately $390,000. If, if that revenue forecast proves accurate, the 5% figure is, is just about $19,500. So, so we would be, we could cover our loss, and yet, in the Edinburgh Park Fund with this 5%, with this 5% percentage that we get to take off the, off the top of the revenues. And that's a little bit about that, so I'm happy to answer any questions, but the, the proposal tonight is a pretty straightforward lodging tax preparation. It's very similar to the lodging tax ordinance that was developed for City of St. Louis Park. It was developed and prepared by our city attorney, who's prepared them for other cities that are their clients as well. Happy to stand for questions.
A couple of questions based on the correspondence from earlier today. First of all, with a 30-year time limit for a public facility charge, are those entities then renewable after that 30-year expiration, or is it 30 years and you're done?
Well, I, maybe I should, I should let the city attorney answer this question, but I think you all know that a few years ago, there was a court decision that changed the way that we interpret the word "in perpetuity." In perpetuity used to mean forever, now it means 30 years. And they, and the courts applied that decision retroactively. So, this, this application of "in perpetuity" expires in 2019.
Again, to the question of its renewability, is that something that you or Attorney Knutson can answer?
On a negotiated basis, and we've started to talk to the various property owner groups that are part of the Edinburgh, St. Lu, excuse me, Edinburgh Centennial Lakes Park development. So, there's various years when some of those 30-year time limits get hit. We've had some opening discussions with them, but, but yeah, it has to be a, it's not an automatic renewal.
And with, so I'm assuming then that the public facility charges that are paid by the office tenants or the office building owners will also have that expiration?
They have, the, different groups have different expiration dates, because they were all in that, you know, '87, '88, '89, '90 time period. So, there's some differences in when they expire, but they're all coming up here in the next couple of years.
And this is not limited to Centennial Lakes, Edinburgh, nor is it limited in time, but with redevelopment occurring around the city and parked dedication fees only applying to certain projects, but increased use of city parks and other recreational facilities by virtue of new housing units, hotel guests, that kind of thing? What options does the city have for shared support of these facilities, other than the property taxes that our property owners pay, that a portion of goes to support these facilities?
We can, we, we are attempting to approach the groups in Centennial Lakes, Edinburgh, and ask them to renew voluntarily, ask them to renew their, their monthly fees that they pay to those facilities. That's one way to do it. There are also perhaps special services districts, that's the way some cities handle that, handle that issue. Those districts have issues associated with them, some of them can have residential units in them, but most of them cannot, and so that's a, that is a vehicle that has some limitations to it.
Finally, what is the purpose of the 5% retention that the city is allowed? What is that 5% supposed to be used for, or what is the reason for its existence in law?
Cities can, can keep the 5% to cover their administrative and overhead costs, and it's generally a, a general revenue of the city, so it's included in the general fund. In, in what we're, what I would propose to you is that we would use that money to cover the loss at Edinburgh Park from this, from this change in status. So, that would involve a, a financial transfer by the council.
Do we have some sense of what our administrative costs would be?
We have a sense that they were, are going to be significantly lower than, than $15,000, but, but not zero. So, yeah, I think we use the 5%. We, we were going to use the 5% just as that's what we're, that's what we're allowed to keep, but we have not, we've, we are, we have not computed the fine numbers of this, but we have talked to City of St. Louis Park to get an idea about what they're spending in the, and I can report back to the council before you do this final adoption.
Thank you. One observation and a comment. I saw the city manager for St. Louis Park at a Rotary Club meeting, and we were talking about this DMO, and first of all, he looked a little frightened when we were talking about Edina maybe having our own.
He should be.
Yeah, he looked threatened. But, he said that since they've launched their DMO, he has, he has watched convention and tourism and hotel business really take off. So, he was a, a big proponent, and that, that says something, coming from a, a recent city manager who's gone through the, through this process. On the special services district, I know we're getting a little off-topic. You could set that up excluding the residential units, and then, so that we have some leverage for future negotiations, because it's another tool we could use, that we choose not to now, because we have the, the CAM or the Maintenance Agreement Center.
Right, right. And there's an element, I mean, part of, but the other reason we haven't used it is that there's an element of democracy in it, that you have to get the, the property owners within a special services district to agree to it. So, part of what we're trying to do on a bilateral basis with some of these, with some of the groups in the Edinburgh Park, Centennial Lakes area, is to see if we can just ask them to say, you know, would you agree to continue paying this monthly fee to support these services that are right outside your door and have a positive impact on your quality of life? We're trying to make that argument, and I think getting some, getting some positive response to it, really.
That's good. And would you mind sending us a schedule, just a, a quick overview of the expiration dates and the associations?
Yep, yep, sure.
I know that the, the condo associations are, are or were coming up as well, and we went through the Edinburgh study and, and reviewed what's going on there. We, we talked about negotiating with them or reviewing those association fee agreements. Thank you.
They weren't going to.
It just seems to me that this is the time to do this. We only have two hotels, and the potential for having more hotels in Edina is there. So, it seems like a good time to put this in place, so that as our hotel business grows, this can continue to just lay right in there. Talking with some of the, the people who work for hotels, they're actually surprised we aren't doing this, since our neighbors are pretty much all doing it at this point, Bloomington, St. Louis Park, Eden Prairie, they all have a lodging tax already. And, and this allows us to kind of start building that piece of, come to Edina and we'll help you arrange for your stay and what to do, and where to eat, entertainment, et cetera. And, so it's, I think, a great marketing tool for, for the city. As mentioned, I think it's fair to say that we will have more hotels. In the Pentagon Park project, they have proposed a possible hotel at the south end, and that's a 450, 500-room hotel, which, which is enormous, and it competes directly with Doubletree, and for the business at Doubletree. So, I think it's going to be really important that when that hotel is up and running, that this is also available, so that, so we can get that convention business and groups coming, coming in, whether it's families or companies or whatever. So, I'm in favor of it.
Is there other comments? We have a thorough discussion on this all the time. Thanks for that, excellent presentation. It feels a little bit like we've been, uh...
Trying to compete with neighbors spending a lot of money, just based on our reputation as a community, and it's, it takes you a long way, but it doesn't take you as far as you want to go, and so it's a little bit like fighting with one arm strapped behind your back, and we want to free everything up, I think, and, and be as competitive as we can possibly be with all of our neighbors that are already doing this. So, I think it's, I'm glad we became aware of this issue today that you raised. Member Bennett, thanks for the questions. Some other thoughts on that, once we understand the true delta between our operating costs and the, and the, and the 5%, and what that loss might be between now and 2019, we might find some ways to explore that with the DMO on a voluntary basis.
Sure.
To make up the delta. Let's just keep that in the back of our mind. So, thank you for all sitting through the sketch plan review. You learned all about what developers do, they can come here and talk to us without spending $50,000 on drawings and find out what we like and what we don't like, and what, what advice we have. Your patience was extraordinary. And so, let's, all right, you ask your question, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the ordinance on a first reading basis.
All right, my question first or a motion?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
All right. So, we are proposing 3%, and our neighboring cities all have higher than 3%.
We're not saying no.
What?
That's the state, that's the statutory threshold, I believe.
That's, that's the statute.
There are a couple that have them higher, but they were grandfathered in when they could have higher rates.
Bloomington, Bloomington, 7%.
You're right, Member Bennett.
Minneapolis, 14 and a half, yeah.
And the city of Minneapolis, higher.
Yeah. I'll, I'll move this with waiver of second reading.
What? No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll waive this.
Move it on a first reading basis, if you would, please.
It says waiver of second.
He changed that when he sent out.
No problem.
We got a motion and a second to approve the...
We got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance 2014 dash four, establishing a local lodging tax funding for a convention visitors bureau, which is, characterizes a destination marketing organization on a first reading basis. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carrie. Second reading will be when?
April twenty-second.
April twenty-second. All right. We are on now to a proposed encroachment agreement with the, with AK Larson Family LLC. Mr. Newendorf, welcome.
Yes, good evening. Bill Newendorf, the city's economic development manager. Tonight, item eight D addresses an encroachment agreement that we're proposing and staff is recommending between the city and the property owners of the building, commonly referred to as a Fiftieth and France professional building. It's at thirty-nine, thirty-nine West Fiftieth, and it's the, it's the property that hosts the Starbucks, the Brad Smiths, Raku eatery, as well as our own Edina liquor store. The owners propose to completely redo the facade of the property, to bring it more up to date, to really make it have an architectural statement that is much more consistent with the rest of the character of Fiftieth and France. As they pursue this objective, they run into one challenge, and that is that the existing building is constructed immediately to the property line. So as they adhere the, the new facade to the building, it would actually extend over the public right of way a few inches. So we're proposing that we consider an easement agreement that would allow them to encroach upon the city's right of way. The second element of this agreement addresses the fact that this building is actually two buildings, one owned by private owners, the other owned by the city where the liquor facility is. And since the owners are intending to manage and implement the, the construction contract, we would also seek authorization to let them extend their work onto the one wall of the Edina liquor store. And so there's provisions in this potential agreement that would address repayment for their costs, cost for the work on, on our property. So that's a quick overview. This evening, I have Dan Miusi, who's with Cornerstone Construction. He's the owner's representative for the project, and also Tammy Magny with Magny Architecture. They have a presentation for you to more fully describe the project. We also have a, a material board in front of us for you to peruse. And...
Thanks. Thanks, Bill. So to get on to, it's on the desk pad. My name's Tammy Magny with Magny Architecture. My address is one eight 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 nine Eastwood Drive, Excelsior, Minnesota. And I've been before you before. I worked on the Courtney Field Building concession stand with a different firm. Well, we kind of wanted to tell you a story, a story of this building. And the owners had come to us in two summers ago and really wanting to create a new vision. Now, the owner had the optical store there a long time ago, and it was a very art deco kind of building. And so he also hired architect Art Dickey, who, who designed and built the present architect, uh, present project now. So just, we'll go through this quickly. It looks like a lot. But we want to talk a little bit about the goals, the context, and what brought us to the, the present design. He really wanted this larger building to feel smaller, to really reinforce the, he loved what's happening with Edina, and he really wanted to reinforce the village image. He, was important to him to have a signature clock tower at the corner. He's always had a pretty signature element, that kind of contemporary angular piece that goes through it. Wanted to really break the scale down of, of this larger building and use materials that are consistent and complimentary to downtown Edina. The other thing is, he's always had a pretty full occupancy and feels a real commitment to his tenants. So to create signage that complements the building, but doesn't have a strip retail feel and works with this, within the city. So he had hoped to actually start it last year, last summer, but we were talking with Bill and some of the city people, and we were looking at putting a third story on it and a lot of things like that, which got us deep into the structural understanding of the building, and it just won't hold that. Part of our inspiration or part of our understanding was to really look at what's happening at Edina, particularly at the buildings that had two large faces on Fiftieth or France. And what, what you'll notice, which I'm sure you all have, but there's, there's undulation, there's ins and outs, there's different heights, there's a variety of things happening, even though there is a large facade at both, both of these kind of major intersection areas. And these ones were taller, too, as we had looked at. And then as we look at the street and look at the street character and how important the pedestrian level is, and that a building really addresses that pedestrian level more than it was currently, looking at the adjacent buildings to it, use of brick, some standing seam metal roof, some stucco, and again, some undulation in, in how the facades work together. If, as you look on the south side of the street, where it's shown on the, on the bottom part of, of this slide, a lot of awnings, because to the south, awnings really help southern sun and really gives you shade. As you look on the north side, which is in the upper right slide, you begin to not see awnings, because they don't really help the sun. And, and the, the buildings are a little more open. Looking at the kind of historical corner building and how they use the white tile to create kind of a pedestrian rhythm along that or facade with the white. And so we were looking at all those things, and, and we looked at many options for this building. But one thing that really rang true with the owner was to create a kind of a multi-level feel of the building and to use, as you'll see, we've kind of, he, he really wanted to use kind of that wood look and define that lower level. And, and what they were able to do in this particular case was define what the offices were above in the upper soffits, and then different from what the use was below. And he really liked how that worked and, and had a, again, a nice pedestrian feel using soffits, larger windows, and two different kinds of materials. So, and also, as we looked at our site, some of our major challenges for the tenants is the sun, the western sun. But no matter how deep we made those, would make an awning or how low it would come, it would, it's pretty tough to beat that western setting sun. So the trees are kind of our best, our best effort with those. But again, talking about, so those guys were using this, weren't they? About those two major facades is what we've really been focused on. This is that liquor store area, as I'm sure you're all aware. This, these are just a couple of quick site plans that indicate, this is the Larson portion of the site, and this is the liquor store portion of the site, just on the first floor and on the second floor. It's the Larson portion on the whole floor. So our existing building is a very contemporary building. It's precast painted, precast concrete that hangs on a structural steel system by clips. And precast, when it was designed, the precast panels, that's about what it's designed to hold. So our first efforts, we wanted to clad it in brick. We wanted to have a lot of stone. We wanted to use a lot of those. And our, quickly, our structural engineer said, that's going to be a challenge. Let's see what other options we can look at. The other challenge kind of in breaking the scale of a building down is this long linear window, which we were, which you'll see how we've incorporated that. And then you can see that underneath it, though it's pedestrian friendly and it's animated, it's kind of a jumble of different things going on. And so how can we improve that? And how can we can pull that together? Some of our, so this is where we're at. We're, we're looking at building a real stone tower, a clock tower, that you access from both sides into the main entry, which is still in the same place that it is right now, creating that facade, that lower facade, that will allow us to have signage for the professional offices above on that facade and still have some more animated kind of awning-like area below. We're looking at differing the materials with the raised parapets. When you do a cantilever, the magic formula is one-third, two-thirds. So the space that we have above our windows is two-thirds, and we are cantilevering it up one-third to give us some different height, because as, as we've mentioned, we are right on that property line. And so the only way to really get any undulation is to do some up and down. And we are also in that can, that area that's cantilevering up, it's a two-by-four, if you can think of that. It's actually a metal one, but along the building, and then our, our finish would be on the outside of that. So while we're not really, the encroachment, you know, most of our window area is exactly where it is now. We aren't encroaching. The main area as of encroachment are at these four corners, or three corners, excuse me, and this area, just where the new finish touches the ground. So the encroachment is mostly at, at those points and then above, two inches out, out, out from that existing concrete above. So these are just some images of that. Again, this, this one was without trees, so you could see better what the fenestrations were. And this is more with the trees. Trying to really work with the existing streetlights. They're really fun. They have a nice scale, a good pedestrian rhythm to them. This would be the north elevation. And looking from like Edina Theater down along the north side, looking at a signage element to create some interest and animation on, on the corners. This is that clock tower entry. And then this is the west image. And looking down from the clock tower down towards Lunds. And we're looking at several levels of signs. So there's a blade sign that you, you kind of see starting in downtown Edina area as well. We see, we saw quite a few of those. The existing signage that's above a, a standing seam metal awning, which we're going to clean up and paint and actually repeat up here so that there's some consistency of materials and vocabulary of materials. But behind it, we're going to take off those translucent signs that have fluorescent lighting behind that are very retail-like, strip mall, take those off and just have a, a metal panel with the, the company logo. And we'll have soffit lights, because there is kind of a built-in soffit that will more softly light that, and it won't be such a strong, strong light. Again, encourage the street furniture that's there, the areas for people to eat outside of Starbucks and Brad Smith. And, oh, we got the Edina Liquor with the red. I can't tell you how many times we changed that. It's supposed to be green, the Edina Liquor red. We've had a lot of different elements. And then, as you may be aware, this building has a really contemporary corner at the liquor store, and it goes back. And so what we're proposing is to carry that brick look back, carry that, this wood, this wood look element around, and then take that finish all the way to the parking ramp. Another problem that this owner has is at the top of the parking ramp, young people are, people are, pull up their pickup trucks, back up their pickup trucks, and they climb up onto that roof. So we're going to do a parapet extension there, too, that more matches the vernacular of the parking lot. So, so I can get rid of the beer cans on the roof. But, and I guess this is just sort of the final image we wanted to share with you. Any questions?
Let me see the ten of course.
I was only going to say, this is an interesting project for you tonight, especially when you had two other sketch plan reviews, because but for the, the project needing this, this encroachment agreement to do it. None of this would be in front of you. They can do everything that they're proposing to do without review and without the, the material review or any of that. So, you know, we've had discussions from time to time about whether the city should have some design review. But in this case, the only thing that's really on the table for us is the, is the encroachment piece of it.
Was it going to come on, so I could then tell if I really appreciate the change?
But that I was going to say, we do have signage rules, but those are not what we're voting on tonight. So I'm sure that you'll work with Carrie and the planning department as to what part of your signage plan works and what part of your signage plan doesn't work. So, no, I think this is great, and I don't have a problem with it. I will tell you that I think whatever flowers are sitting in front of Brad Smith right now and the other ones look fabulous. You know, where the building may be a little stark in its design compared to everyone else's, that one strip, if you just keep your eyes at your own height and not looking up, it, it's charming. So whoever's working on that and does all that work, don't lose them. They're worth keeping. But no, I think this is great.
Good to know, yeah.
What are the X panels made out of?
Drive-It, which is, you're probably aware, but it's a two-inch foam that's, that's adhered to the side of the building. And then, and actually, that's what's shown.
Put your material board up. That would be helpful.
I'm going to need help, Dan.
Oh, I'm too short. I didn't even know it was there.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of hidden. I'm going to put this down.
So this is the stone that we're proposing for the tower. And this is the brick look, which is also, this probably isn't necessary, right?
The brick look, which is also a Drive-It, which is the same foam. Dan, maybe you could show them the cross-section. Without, it's acrylic plaster on a fiberglass mesh. And Drive-It hasn't always had a great reputation. It's come a long ways. Actually, Dan and I had to be quite convinced of it. They're using new fiberglass meshes, and it's, and it's a lot stronger. But we are proposing to use the stone down at the street level and use this material up above. And to be honest, we'd probably be using a brick if the building would hold it. But it won't. And, so...
So where it might get kicked?
Where it might get kicked, it's going to be real.
You're going to be using brick up?
Up above where it won't get hit unless the boom truck comes around.
It's faux.
Right. It's pretend. Right.
The material, it looks like brick is actually Drive-It?
Yeah, it is. Mm-hmm. Yep.
And, and the wood look is achieved, achieved with the other type of Drive-It?
It's another kind of Drive-It. And they, they, they put it really smooth and really hard. And he actually had a cart that he was banging against it to prove to us that it was real.
Yeah. One of the things that I worry about is that, and it looks, looks good, but with use of non-natural materials or unnatural materials, you know, I don't want it to look like Maple Grove, like, what's their town center up there?
Arbor Lakes.
Arbor Lakes. I mean, I, there's, I know you're sensitive to this, and the owner's sensitive to it, that he wants it to look like Fiftieth and France. He likes what it looks like down there.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that what he does actually does look like Fiftieth and France and not look like a far distant suburb. It looks more like the urban core. It looks, it looks older. I mean, it fits in.
Your point, your point you're making is that you wanted it to look traditional the way buildings that are down there that are fifty years old, not like a new building. That was your point, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that's why it does have more of that character instead of a more contemporary look to it, the, with the cornices and the scale and the, some of the detailing.
I mean, what worries me is that that clock tower with Drive-It all around it.
No, the clock tower is stone.
Stone, all the way up?
Yep, all the way up.
Because they're putting a new foundation for it, therefore it can hold the stone.
Yeah, and, you're good. Yeah, you guys do know a lot about architecture. I've been sitting in the...
So you, you don't have the stone material here?
Yep.
That's stone.
Well, that's, yeah, but the, the stone here looks like big blocks, big...
Well, it should look like, you know...
She brought that.
It doesn't look like, I mean, to me, it looked like the material you were going to use at the base. You've got that base material, which is kind of like what we see over at Fiftieth and France.
I think what happened, I'm going to go back to that detail on the, on the screen. I, I think what happened in the...
I like the brick. I like the stone.
You like the stone? That's what it's going to be.
Okay.
And I guess when I look at this next drawing over, it doesn't, you know, you can see that there's a stone look above the, above the base.
Mm-hmm. And that will be kind of just that, that bottom one you're talking about, that bottom stone? I'm going to use this to point.
You see your base, your base has, what is it, two, three feet high?
Yeah.
And that's, that's some kind of a cast material, I take it.
Right, like a limestone.
Like a limestone. And then you've got, on the corners, you've got real stone up the clock tower.
All the way up.
And then we're all... And then we're also, are you using the real stone?
That's, that's the only places, yep.
And then underneath the clock tower where we see the, what looks like brick, that's the drive-it?
You're right. That actually, we've been talking about, that, that will prob-
In the entry?
It could be drive-it. There's a couple of choices. It could be drive-it or that could be a thin brick because that's not hanging from the, or brick, because that's not hanging from the precast.
You've got to tell me if I'm way off base here, you know, or my worries are ill-founded because I don't want it to look like Arbor Lakes down there.
We don't either.
Yeah, well, it's good.
Mayor, your quote's going to be on a billboard sometime, just like Wilder Bully. This is going to be the calling card for Arbor Lakes.
They have really good plantings up there.
I can predict right now. Somehow your comments always turn into promotion for other places. It's not going, your point is you want it to look authentic. And we have it right here in front of us.
We do too.
Placed, placed high above. Well, no, I just want to, Mayor, placed high above.
No, Arbor Lake, don't get me wrong. Arbor Lakes looks good for what it is because it was all new and all done at the same time. But it has a distinctly suburban look to it.
My, since we're seeing materials board, and I understand that this is kind of a hybrid process because you, but for the encroachment agreement, the necessity of obtaining that, they would not need to be here.
We don't regulate.
If it would improve the comfort of his honor and possibly other, others, could we specify the agreement to the encroachment, in the, in the agreement to an encroachment agreement, could we specify the use of materials as shown in this meeting? Do they relate legally? Can we do that?
Mayor, Mr. Councilor, already in agreement.
All right.
The material boards, they have here, they have to build in accordance with the material board.
Late night reading doesn't give me every detail.
To be.
It's E.
To, to a pedestrian on the street level, looking up at this facade of brick, could they tell the difference between your board and a placed brick? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about from the pedestrian because it's above the awnings and it's up high, it's on the second story.
I don't think so myself, but a couple of the architects that were-
They don't have a choice.
Yeah.
They can't hang brick.
Yeah, we can't hang brick.
Yeah.
And, you know, we did look at like all stucco options and it was kind of too vanilla-y. You know, it wanted texture. It wanted some depth and richness of color. And the, the stucco approaches, just, they didn't do it for us or the owner. And who would be here but, he's out of town right now.
I, I do have a question.
You bet.
And it has to do with the color of the brick material. The brick material that I see here is a reddish, a light reddish brown. The brick material there is quite dark.
Mm-hmm.
Is that that?
It is, yeah. We, we would like a darker brick. What happens when you put a darker brick on these images is it looks black and you don't see any texture. So it is, it's the material board we'd like you to really look at. But we can go lighter or darker. That's, that is kind of the magic about drive-it. You can make it whatever color you want. What you can't do is make it multiple colors. You can't do that real blended brick.
Chicago brick kind of.
Yeah, you can't do that. You're limited. They can touch the edges and make them look more burnt, you know, but it's going to be more of a solid color brick, which a lot of brick is, a lot of real brick is.
And I totally understand, the only reason we can talk about this is because you need a couple inches.
Yeah.
But if I look at these colors and I look at those colors, I say that we're not looking at the same thing.
That's what they're all used to.
You're right. We're limited by what we can do with the computer and by printing, you know, what it looks like when it comes out.
Right, I totally understand that two, two prints of the very same thing can look different because of the ink. I do understand that.
But that's why we wanted to bring the material board so you could actually see what we were thinking of. That's why we brought that.
And I think the colors you picked go really well together.
Thanks.
Well, they're dark. They go well together, but they're dark.
Well, and again, to your answer, it appears that technologically, we cannot have, your client cannot have what's depicted on paper because what's depicted on paper to show the detail, the shape of the brick, is not possible with the material to your description. You said you can't get the color variation.
I just, I use a computer program called SketchUp. And, and just the choices that are available on that computer program, I couldn't get that dark or it looked like one just big solid brown.
Sure, but again, again, what you've shown on paper is not technically possible with that material because you can't have the color variations with-
Oh, crap.
Yes, that's, sorry.
I wasn't following you totally.
Yeah, so you've chosen to depict it on paper because it allows us to see that what the brick will be shaped like.
Gives you an idea, yeah.
But it's not, again, possible. And so it's not, but, but looking at the photographs that you've described, there's already a variety within the area from some of the older buildings, which do have much more variety in the coloration of the brick, to some of the newer buildings, which whether the brick is lighter or darker, have less of that gradient of color.
Yeah, and that's why, just a sec, Josh, that's exactly why we, you know, we have the brick and then we have more of the stucco and then the brick and then the stucco. So we could have variation even though, instead of just doing it all brick. Yep.
So we're placing our faith in you and I'm sure Mr. Larson is too.
I still have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
The tiles with the Xs, yeah, I don't see that on the materials board, yeah.
That is meant to be more of a metal panel. It's going to be in this, this darker color. It may, we might not even have quite that color, but it's going to be in the brown range. But it's a matter of a, of a panel being four inches thick and then two inches thick to give that ridge around it. And then the X will be in it and it'll all be the same color, but it'll be a brown value.
Okay, and then the lighter piece that's like this, is that the lighter gray or what is that?
Yeah.
That's that?
Yep. And this is that bottom part, the, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, it just, that explanation is really necessary because otherwise I would take that picture as my understanding of what it's going to look like. So, yeah, well, it's dark, but it'll be very pretty. But Member Swenson mentioned the flowers at Starbucks. We will miss those.
Oh, I don't think they're going away.
Are they? Well, I don't, I don't see any along the glass.
Well, yeah, we, I did, I did not show those in the-
Just didn't draw them in?
Because they're just planters. But no, that's not planted, they're away.
All right, okay, good. Thank you.
All right, Members break.
As you can see, we're visual learners up here.
That's okay.
You mess up a rendering up here, there's trouble, period. I would like, just like to say, I look at what's there existing and I look at this and it's, it's a tremendous improvement.
It is.
And I think, looking, I liked that you went through your thought process and what you're trying to emulate. And given your technological restrictions, I think this is a good arrival. So I would like to move this and again, to, in order to leverage this change from what's there to what can be, I think the encroachment's reasonable.
Would your motion include the materials, use of the materials?
That's in, that's E.
It's an E in the agreement, Mayor, so.
It's in there.
And the agreement also covers the minor changes, major changes. It's pretty comprehensive.
You got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Period.
Thank you.
This will be, this will be a great project to watch. What are you thinking about timing-wise in terms of start and-
After the art fair.
After the art fair.
And then how long will it take?
Probably three months, three days. We're hoping that's it.
Yeah, so by fall, we'll-
Hopefully, yeah.
Keep looking at a new corner down there.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's great. I'm very excited about it. Good.
Nicely done. Harry. And thanks to you as well, Dan. We're on to correspondence and petitions. Manager Neal, anything other than what we have on the diocese here?
There is not.
All right. Any aviation noise update for us, Manager Neal or then Member Bennett?
A couple of updates. Member Swenson and Manager Neal and I attended the meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee following our last council meeting two weeks ago. And at that meeting, Manager Neal and I presented Edina's request for three permanent remote monitoring towers. Manager Neal had requested those by letter to the MAC, the Metropolitan Airports Commission. He had received a written response?
No.
Okay, no written response. But we did have a pre-meeting with the At-Large Cities Group that was coordinated by the At-Large Cities Representative, John Bergman, and we had had some conversations. The rash, the support, the supporting reasons that we gave for our seeking these measuring towers were the providing a measurement of current conditions before even the change in, in RNAV arrivals takes place either later this year or in 2015. There will also, of course, be future consideration of RNAV for departures. We also felt that it was very important to have factual information, objective data that was available to decision-makers, and also very important that we have objective data available for our residents in order to better understand what it is that they are experiencing and how that compares with what's being experienced by residents and property owners in other adjoining communities. We also felt that the map depicts two things. The response, the formal response, I guess not in writing, that we got from the MAC staff is that the placement of the towers is designed to capture noise as it leaves the airport. However, one can see from looking at the map of the towers that's at macnoise.com that although there is a sort of an inner ring of towers, as it were, with 39 towers that are in place, many of those are located quite a distance from the airport, including in Inver Grove Heights, also in Burnsville, and also in Apple Valley. And there are some turning movements that are taking place over Edina with flights that are flying west over Highway 62 that don't appear to be captured by any of the remote monitoring towers that are currently in place. So we made our presentation, At-Large Member Bergman, who is a city council member in Apple Valley, moved approval of the towers. And when the vote was held, there was one vote in favor and that was City Council Member John Quincy, who is one of the members of the NOC, and Council Member Bergman did not vote in favor. Following that decision, Council Member Bergman said that he would like to request on behalf of the At-Large Cities that the NOC hold a conversation on the location of the remote monitoring towers. That request was tabled until discussion of the 2015 work plan. We do have correspondence, emails from the At-Large Cities, and pretty consistently what they are requesting is not just a discussion of the location of the remote monitoring towers, but actually consideration of where they are located and perhaps an analysis of where they should be located. That's my understanding.
However, out of the 10 At-Large Cities, seven have monitors.
Well, there's seven, seven and four have monitors. The only three who don't are St. Louis Park, Edina, and then Sunfish Lake.
Which has a population of 450.
That is correct. So that was the action taken by the NOC. Following that meeting, Chad Lake, the MAC staff, requested that Manager Neal and I meet with him and suggested that we pursue perhaps temporary noise monitoring towers. We were notified, I believe, the next day that actually that is being pursued in the legislature by Representative Ron Earhart in the House and Senator Melissa Franzen in the Senate. And Member Swenson and I went over to the legislature that Friday, the 21st, and attended the hearing in the House Transportation Policy Committee. And after brief discussion and testimony by Mitch Kilburg, who is the Governmental Affairs Representative for the MAC, that matter was voted with just one dissenting vote to be referred to the House floor for vote. Monday at 3:00 PM, the Senate Transportation Commission, our committee met, and I was able to attend that meeting. At this meeting, Dennis Probst, who is a Assistant VP for the MAC, testified. And there was a bit more discussion and some questions from members of that committee. The Senator from Duluth reiterated his support and the support of his community for expanded use of the Duluth Airport. And it also passed to the Senate floor out of that committee with a few more dissenting votes, but it did pass. So the status at this point is that it is now been referred to both houses for approval. What residents can do at this point, I think both Senator Franzen and Representative Earhart know of the concern, concerns of our residents. Representative Paul Rosenthal also sits on the House Transportation Policy Committee, so he was part of that discussion and vote on Friday, the 21st. I think it could be helpful if members of this community have contacts in other communities, serving in the House or Senate, that they be in contact with them, also with the governor. As Member Swenson pointed out, of the seven At-Large, all of the cities with seats on the NOC have noise monitoring going on. Four of the seven At-Large Cities also have noise monitoring going on. And what this bill asks for is temporary monitoring to take place over a two-week period this summer or fall with a report back to the legislature in an area that is bounded on the north by 394, on the south by 494, on the east by Xerxes Avenue, and on the west by 169. So this would encompass both Edina and St. Louis Park, possibly a small part of Hopkins, and would certainly give us measurement, some measurement in an area in which the runway with the most use for both departing flights and arriving flights is carrying those flights.
Good, good report. Thank you. Questions for Member Bennett? Member Swenson, any other comments from your legislative appearance?
No, it was very interesting.
All right.
They're very different bodies and it was very interesting.
All right. Council comments, Member Brendel.
Thank you. I just have one quick one. Just looking at what is on the diocese tonight, the current issue of Edina Magazine, and I opened the front cover and there's a picture, the table of contents page of Alan Law, who is the Sandwich Man, 363. This is a, he's an Edina resident. And this is really an amazing project. He goes, he's got various organizations making sandwiches for him. And Edina Morningside Rotary has done this twice this year now. And, and then he spends his nights out handing, handing out sandwiches to people who haven't had a meal that day. Typically, people who live on the streets, but some people are, are in a shelter such as Salvation Army and they just didn't happen to get their mealtime. So, so they haven't had anything to eat. So that's what he does with his, his retirement. So he's, he's an inspiration. But yeah, it's in this, this month's Edina Magazine. So there you go.
Member Bennett?
It's been mostly aviation-related. That's what I have to report.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
Well, I have a question on the minutes from the Health Commission in this advisory communication. The minutes from January, they passed a motion suggesting that we have some sort of licensing to make sure that e-cigarettes aren't sold to anyone under the age of 18. But the advisory doesn't talk about that. So can you get some clarification for me on this?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. That's all I have, other than aviation.
A resident brought up a point that I wanted to bring to the council about living streets and being able to encourage people to, to walk and get exercise. And many people do this with a dog. I think about a third of households nationally are estimated to have a dog. But our ordinance doesn't allow the dog to micturate. Are you all familiar with that word?
No.
Because it sounds like a Scrabble word or something that, anyway, it cannot urinate or defecate on public property or private property without the consent of the owner. And I'm pretty sure that the practice is you're going along with your dog and the dog does its business, certainly not urination, but defecation, and the owner picks it up and along you go. And so I think our ordinance might be overly restrictive. And I want to suggest that- And I want to suggest that, that we look at Minnetonka's, which allows, I'll read it to you. A person must not permit an animal under his or her care, custody, or control to defecate on public or private property without permission of the property owner unless the person immediately cleans up and disposes of the animal's feces in a sanitary manner and so on. It just seems to mirror what the practice is.
I will say, I will say that as a gardener-
Yep.
If you have plantings near a sidewalk or an area that dogs frequently pass and they pick particular spots which they will then follow, other dogs will follow up on, it will kill your plants.
Right.
And so, I was always careful when I walked my late dog as to where she urinated. But that is, that is an owner's choice. I, I, I think the ordinance as some are prob, is probably observed more in the breach than it is in the following. But it is some, something to be aware of. I think it's one of those good neighbor ordinances. And Minnetonka sounds reasonable, but I do think it's something that people want to be aware of, is the damage to property that happens with accumulated use.
Right, no. So, that's why I was bringing it up. Some, a resident brought it up and I thought it was worthy of maybe some review by our city attorney. And they can bring something back?
It's a great word.
Micturate.
Just means urinate, that's all it means.
Can do.
All right. Fascinating topics we broach up here on the dais. And then the second one is, we got some correspondence about utility work around Benton Avenue last year that's being continued in the spring. And there was a lack of notice from the utility provider. And staff did a really good job of facilitating communication on that request and is working with the utility provider to make sure that they, they send out proper communications. My question is, how are we tracking these breaches throughout the year? I know utility providers come up a lot in street reconstruction projects. And when, when do we have these conversations with the various utility providers about how they're, how they're meeting our community expectations?
Mr. Miller?
On communication and, and the follow-up work after the work has been done in the street?
Yeah, I don't think we have a formal tracking policy, but we did review the permit today after those comments to make sure that right in there is our ordinance for communication expectations. So, center points aware of those now. And I guess if we continue to see repeated offenses, we will bring them in and say, you know, you need to follow this strict. But if we go, you know, stricter, I don't know where we go from there. We, we can require them to provide communications prior to the work before we'll issue the permit. Now would be the ultimate thing we could do.
So, I'm guessing that you go through these things with tree trimmers and all, there's all kinds of different ways it might come up. And then you have your own internal review within the departments and then decide if you need to take the next step.
Yep, and you identify the troublesome ones and they get more of our attention than the more cooperative ones.
Okay. That's it.
Good, thanks. Two things for me as well. Member Brindle, go ahead.
I, I, just, Member Swenson's comment brought this up. I did go online and look at smoking. The state has amended what smoking is to include smoke or vapor from any lighted or heated cigar, cigarette pipe or any other lighted or heated tobacco or plant product or electronic delivery device.
Did they pass it?
I think so.
Not yet.
Oh, they haven't?
No.
Well, it's dated, oh, as introduced. I guess I didn't realize it hadn't passed.
Yep.
But, but then there, inside of it is six oh nine dot six eighty-five, which is sale of tobacco to children.
They may take care of it for us, that's kind of why I'm waiting.
Yeah, exactly.
I think they will, yeah. But if they don't, then maybe we'll have a discussion about it.
Thank you.
Oh, and it is the start of April, which is Bike Every Day Month, by the way. It has a different title than that, but I just want you to know.
That's the notion?
It starts, no, April is, it's, it started in Minnesota and it's now become a national event. And it is the month of April and you are encouraged to bike every day. Today wasn't a really great day this morning for biking.
All right, the Corridor Management Committee for Southwest LRT meets tomorrow morning and will take some more public testimony. But tomorrow we will make another recommendation. Yet a second recommendation to the Metropolitan Council regarding the routing of the Southwest LRT line. So, that's, that'll be a big deal tomorrow. And then, we're just thinking about, you, you two were talking about aviation and I had dinner last Thursday night with the mayor of Doral, Florida and we got to talking about RNAV. And he's an Italian immigrant by way of Venezuela and still has his Italian accent. He said, we have a, the RNAV here or two, they all fly out over to, over to Doral Country Club and tell them, Mr. Trump, he buys the property. Now they fly out over to Commercial Industrial District. And we need to call Mr. Trump. See if he can give us some relief. Anyway, that was a great, a great meeting. A city about the same size as ours, a lot of interesting things going on. And it was an enjoyable evening. So, that's it for me. Manager Neal?
Just a, a few things, but I'll start with, with Ms. Mangan. Do you want to talk about the youth commissioners?
Thank you. Yeah, it is that time of year when we need to once again begin the process. And the city has hired a, Karen, help me with your title. Project Coordinator, M.J. Lamon, and she will be taking over boards and commissions. We would like to start opening the application process by about mid-May, mid-April and take applications through the end of May. And then we have three dates proposed for interviews in June that would yield us about twenty-four interview spots for fifteen. We've always done about fifteen-minute interviews with students. In the past couple of years, Members Bennett and Brindle have handled the application process and I believe we have invited chairs if they so chose to sit in. So, I would like to find out if that is indeed the process you would like to follow. Then we will generate a press release. I've already made a exploratory contact to Janet Schmeele at the high school to get information out there. She's there on break. And so, I just want to get your feedback. And then I have three dates, but I can be offline with Members Brett and Bennett and Brindle to get those, those dates and times. We've chosen three different days of the week and times during the day. School ends on the sixth of June and we would be looking at those, at days during those next two weeks if you guys, if you would be in town, so I'd like your direction.
Would any of our fellow council members like to do this? I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of fun. It's an honor to get to know these kids. And, and I'm certainly willing to do it again, but I, I don't want to commit until you have a chance to step in.
I have a complicated June, but I appreciate your offer. I'm going to take a pass.
You love it, might as well keep doing it. Seriously, I mean, you guys do a great job, so I-
Okay.
I'm interested, but I think you do a great job and there's no reason why we can't keep the tradition going.
I would like to say that whoever you're putting in charge, Ms. Mangan, of the process, you set a very high bar. Thank you for your previous work. Good luck to your, to the new person trying to achieve that bar.
I would say that if-
Ms. Lamon is very, very dynamic, very organized. And I think you're going to really enjoy working with her. She's, she's quite the lady.
Compliments to you.
I would say if either of you would prefer to, prefer to someone else, you know, let staff know. You don't have to decide tonight. We, we, we love the work you've done, but it's a lot of work. Takes quite a bit of time. We know that from the other board and commission interviews we do.
Well, getting-
I think we'd generally love to have you continue to work.
Sort of got this down to a science. But, but truly, I mean, if it is something, Josh, that you would enjoy, you're, you're welcome. So, but otherwise, we're happy to do it. I'm speaking for you.
Well, it, it is a real pleasure today. And over the, when we first, just as with the adult applicants, we make sure that everybody who applies gets interviewed. And the first summer, we were, I think, working with City Hall to schedule, but we were scheduling off-site at the library and other places. And I think it took most of two months. There were days when we would have one interview in a day. And so, it's made a huge difference to have it coordinated through City Hall and have the interviews here. And really has streamlined it. I think there's been refinement over the years, catching students before they head out. I think we've had a number of students who've interviewed the day before they've left for a month or two months in the summer. So, it is, it is a joy and a pleasure to get to know students and hear of their interests and aspirations.
Okay. Just a couple of other quick announcements. We had a meeting this afternoon, Mr. Milliner and Mr. Neundorf and Mr. Teague and I with the real estate group from Macy's. We meet with them periodically just to touch base with what's going on with their property. And they're, at this point, happy with their home store and want to keep it the way it is. They're interested in what's going on with the Promenade and other kind of development around them. The Promenade project, we have learned just recently, is probably going to be delayed until next spring rather than this year. The Byerly's Housing Project got delayed a couple of months. So, that delays the start of the Promenade project as they, as they need to be in that Promenade area to, to stage, to build their project. So, instead of making that more complicated, it's better and easier and cheaper for everyone just to be patient and wait to do our project. So, we will get at that as soon as we can. There are two events that are coming up from the Human Rights and Relations Commission. Thursday, excuse me, Tuesday, the eighth, is the Days of Remembrance Event. That's seven PM at the Senior Center. And Thursday, April tenth, is a genocide awareness event. And that also starts at seven PM and that's at City Hall. And that's all I've got for you tonight.
All right, good, thank you. Anyone have anything else? All right, we stand adjourned. And there is no HRA work tonight. HRA.